That meeting will come to order. Welcome to this Monday, November 4th, 2013, regular Mercer Island City Council meeting. Ally, could you call roll?
Hi, it's been awhile.
Ally, welcome back.
Thank you.
If you call roll.
Would you like me to say it in Swahili? Okay, Councilmember Debbie Burtland, Councilmember Jane Baum, Councilmember Mike Sero, Councilmember Mike Grady, Councilmember Thompson, Deputy Mayor Dan Gross, Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's see, we'll come to appearances in a moment, but we have a new face with Ally. So Ally, if you want to carry on and do an introduction.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Karen Roberts. She's our new deputy city clerk. She came back today after being here on Friday, so that's a good sign. Karen comes from the city of Woodville where she has been there for, was there for 16 years in the finance department. The city clerk's office used to be part of the finance department, so she has a good idea of what we do and still took the job. So, we're very happy to have her aboard and we look forward to easing her into this process so that it's not too scary.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, welcome. And on behalf of the rest of the council, welcome. So, yeah, ease in. Okay, we have, first item of business is appearances. Remember when anybody may speak to the council on any issue they wish. You'll have three minutes. Lights will come on to let you know when you're close and out of time. Rules of engagement are on the back wall, but short story is tell us your name, address, and be civil. With that, we're open to comments. Come on up, Bob.
Try to be civil, Bob. I would discuss that. I'm Robert Thorpe, 5800 West Mercer Way, and I am a businessman in the Business District at the, in downtown. I'm here to comment a little bit on the political scene. We've had a, we've watched this for a long time and having been in politics since 68, working for vital candidates for senators, to governors, to council members, just an observation, my heroes are Harry Truman, Joe Biden, and Alan Simpson. There's a great book, you can get it at the bookstore, it's called Shooting from the Left. My cousin served in the House and Senate with him and his wife, the state Republican Committee woman. He's very, I would suggest you read it and look at his last chapter on Bush II, it's very telling. My cousin shares some of his feelings about Dick Cheney and the other boys in the White House, so, but tonight I'd like to talk about the local scene a little bit. I have always been very disturbed when good candidates get shot at for no reason. It happened to Warren Magnussen. Many of you don't know that he had a slightly club fit and the Slade Gordon campaign took pictures of him to prove that maybe he had a drinking problem. It happened again and again. It happened to a woman from Lanton. She was a single mother with two children. When she was on the planning commission and she got elected to council, later they attacked her for not being a good mother when she was on the county council. This happened again recently in the Jane Hague campaign where the ultra-left took her on and did this stupid ad at night. So, I have, I get really concerned as somebody that's been an activist about fair play. The axiom is if you have something good to say about your opponent or yourself, do it. But if you can't say it about yourself, don't attack your opponent. And I have some concerns about this. I'd like to give you a little view on the current elections. I swore I would stay out of this, but something's happened in the last couple of weeks that prompted me to come here and speak. I think on one, on one race you have two incredibly capable people, as good as anybody that's here and served. One who's far more experienced is an attorney, very capable, and I think would be a great council member. He brings a lot of family things in fear. But the younger candidate is a very bright young man, and he and I shared over two hours of coffee some concerns about, about the special education on the island. We both think there's some problems there. He has the idea that there ought to be a committee between the council and the school board that talks about issues like the bond issues and that. I think either one of those candidates, if they lose, would be an excellent candidate for somebody, if somebody were to step down. So I think you've got way too great. On the other race, I think you've got two good, well-meaning people. But I'm deeply disturbed about one thing that one of the candidates has brought up. The whole idea that somehow this council failed on the legacy issue. It's a wrong thinking, it's wrong analysis. I'm a planner, I do this. Here you have a property owner, I go to, her son is in Boy Scouts with me at Troop 457. She's a very smart businesswoman. She hired, they got legacy, they started. We did the original study of what you could do with that property, for massing for the property owners. They asked for a traffic variance. It's been asserted in this, in this race that you did something improper. Excuse me, they have the best attorneys.
Bob, I gotta cut you off.
Okay, let me finish. They have the best attorneys, they have the best, the staff approved it, the, the city staff approved it, the design commission, you approved it. I think that's an error and I think it's wrong, and I'm here to submit that Legacy did something right and there were no special benefits given to Legacy on that project. And somebody says that, I think is missing form.
I got it, thank you. You knew you were gonna run long, you did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and let me just say, I gotta just be even-handed with that, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Ira.
Hi. Ira Appleman, 4436 Ferncroft Grove. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I have to respond to what Robert Thorpe said because I think it's completely wrong. There are many people on the island who are concerned with the overdevelopment in the town center that's been driven by the council. And, you know, to say that, well, you're working by the rules, you're making the rules. And many people believe, as I do, that you've made bad rules and the Legacy project is just one of the huge developments down there that shouldn't be on Mercer Island. And so, I think that it's right for candidates to speak up on this very, very important issue of the, of the overdevelopment in the town center and what it's doing to Mercer Island, which is mainly a single-family neighborhood. And, the way that the council, at least some council members have said, well, you know, the Growth Management Act, we have to do this, but that is absolutely not true. We had the, the person who's now, I think, city manager, the equivalent of city manager, Tukwila, he was our Development Services Group Director, and he was asked about whether we needed to put more density in the town center, and he said no, when he was Development Services Director here. And he said, not only no, that even if this, even if the legislature changed the rules, we wouldn't have to jam in as much as we're jamming in. So I think it's right for candidates to bring up, and islanders. I hear them talking about the overcrowding in the town center and they're concerned about it, they think it's wrong, and I think it's right for candidates to raise that issue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we pause public comments, thank you. And move to minutes, we have two sets of minutes. We're doing both at once?
Uh.
Yeah, okay. So, every time, I'm always left with the, how would you like to deal with this? Do you have, you have minor ones, very minor ones?
And he sent them to Ally in advance, so that might have helped.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you for that. Ally, how do you want to handle it? Since you know what they are?
Yeah, what, Councilmember Sero. Why don't you just go ahead and say what your amendments are for each set and what page they're on, and I'll make sure that the motion correctly has your additions or additions.
I'd like to make an amendment to the October 7th minutes on page three, at the very bottom, and change fire slash safety meeting to public safety meeting. Which is, which is just accurate, which is what it is.
Yeah.
Which if you, if you. If you prefer, we could just call that a scripter's air.
Yeah.
And just make that change.
Okay. And then on the October 22nd.
Let's, let's. Let's stick with one set at a time.
Okay. I'd like to move that we, well, actually that was the amendment, so someone please second it. We're calling it scripter's air, so there's no.
Yeah, there's no motion to amend on this, we just have the, the main motion for the October 7th.
What we do have is a motion already on the floor.
Correct.
Both sets of minutes.
Oh, okay. So, we need to do two, two separate motions.
So, Debbie, can you?
I apologize.
Go again on the.
Just October 7th.
I'm going to approve the minutes, you're on October 7th.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a scripter's air, but nothing else? So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Go ahead and, let's do a motion, the second one, and then let Mike go on.
I'm going to approve the minutes, October 22nd.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a scripter correction on the last page, page four. Councilmember reports about three-quarters of the way down. Councilmember Sero commented on how well the police department, et cetera. I'd like to replace department with officers. And I would like to replace at parade rest with during the wash dot listening session at the high school.
Ally, you okay with that as a scripter's, or, okay?
I would say it's okay because it doesn't necessarily change what the point of the statement was, and I wasn't at that meeting to know exactly what was discussed, so.
Actually, he did say it that way. I would only suggest you make that wash dot scoping meeting.
Got it.
Any other changes? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We move to the consent calendar. We have tables and table on the consent calendar.
Consent calendar.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We move to Agenda Bill 4891, First Time Regular Business Interlocal Agreement Extension with MISD Concerning the Operation of the Mary Wait Pool. Welcome Bruce Fletcher.
Thank you. For the record, Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation. Before you, it's an interlocal agreement extension with the Mercer Island School District concerning the operation of Mary Wait Pool. The city and the school district have been working together for many years to ensure the proper pool remains open for the public. In 2013, the city council authorized a one-year extension agreement and, with the Mercer Island School District, and that agreement expires at the end of this year. Bless you. At the city council-school board joint meeting, city manager Rich Conrad and Mercer Island School District Superintendent Gary Plano led a discussion regarding the need to extend the interlocal agreement for the 2014 year. So the recommendation before you is to authorize the city manager to sign the one-year extension agreement with Mercer Island School District in the amount of $125,000 for continued services on Mary Wait Pool. City manager Conrad and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, I'd also, I'd add on to that, as you probably remember, at the joint, right after the joint's council's school board meeting, the school board acted upon this interlocal on their end, so we will be the second party, and if approved tonight, then it will be in effect. Tonight, Alice Godfrey is here from OCA, Olympic Aquatics, is that right?
Olympic Cascade Aquatics.
Olympic Cascade, I'm sorry. I probably just did something really bad there. And they will be, continue to be the operator pool in the next year under this agreement.
So, council questions for Bruce or Rich? No questions, being none. You're looking for a motion, then?
Can you correct the typo in the first paragraph? The city of Mercer Island?
Yes. I don't see the typo. Oh, in the, it's probably ever in the agenda, in the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
Oh, actually, there were two. Okay, yeah, correct that. I saw that one before and I thought I saw another at the same time, but.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize city manager to enter into a one-year extension agreement to the interlocal agreement between the city of Mercer Island and the Mercer Island School District concerning the operation of the Mary Wait Swimming Pool.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Move to Agenda Bill 4884, amended draft shoreline master program first reading. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor Councilmember, Scott Greenberg, Development Services Group Director. I guess we're going from one kind of aquatics to another here. So at tonight's meeting, as Mayor mentioned, is first reading of the proposed ordinance, which when adopted, will adopt the SMP update, Shoreline Master Program update. Tonight, what I'd like to do is do a brief review of the history of the SMP update, which has taken almost six years. Describe the different components of the SMP that are included in the ordinance, so all these documents and components make up the SMP. And then tee up the two remaining issues for council discussion and direction. And those issues are the, with the docks within the first 30 feet of the ordinary high watermark, and then also some changes to definitions. We will be asking council for direction on those items, as well as a motion to set the second reading of this ordinance at your next meeting. So, to set the broader context, the Shoreline Master Program was adopted in 1971 and then affirmed by voters in 1972. This new legislation at the time required jurisdictions with shorelines to adopt local land use policies and regulations which were designed to manage shoreline use. Mercer Island's original and current SMP was adopted in 1974. There have been some amendments over time, but then the next milestone was 2003, when the state of Washington adopted new guidelines for shoreline master programs and what would have to be included in the SMPs and the rules regarding SMPs. And that was a result of several years of negotiations, litigation, and finally some settlement. In 2007, recognizing that this was a large body of work to ask many jurisdictions around the state to take on ecology, or the legislature appropriated some funds for ecology to use as grant funding, and Mercer Island did receive a grant in 2007, and that started the work on the SMP. SMPs are adopted locally, but also must be approved by the Department of Ecology. So there's really two sort of paths that the SMP has to follow. One is local approval, which expectedly you will do this year, and then the Department of Ecology will approve Mercer Island's SMP either this year or probably more likely early next year. The public process, which was a major part of the SMP, began in early 2009 with briefings to the city council and planning commission and a public open house. The planning commission then held 29 meetings, including two public hearings on the update, and after two years, they forwarded a recommendation to the city council on April 6th, 2011. So the green line here is the planning commission, all these little dots or asterisks are when the meetings were held by quarter. And the planning commission made their recommendation in the second quarter of 2011. Following that, between April and August of 2011, the city council held six meetings, including one public hearing, and on August 1st of 2011, the city council passed Resolution 1440, which was a resolution expressing the city's intent to adopt an SMP, an updated SMP pending ecology approval. And that original resolution is Exhibit 2 on your Agenda Bill. Ecology, even though their formal review started in 2012, they were providing comment throughout this period of review by the planning commission and city council. And their formal review began once they received the SMP in the first quarter of 2012, and then Ecology, in the fourth quarter of 2012, opened the public comment period, which ran just about a year ago, from October 22nd to November 26th. And Ecology held a public hearing at the Mercer Island Community and Events Center on November 8th. Some of you were in attendance at that meeting, as I recall. Ecology then sent all the public comments to the city for review, and the city's response. And that draft response document was reviewed by the city council in March of this year and then transmitted to Ecology. So again, that's, that's part of the process. The next step in the process was Ecology provided a set of, Ecology provided a set of required, there it is, required and recommended changes to the SMP. There weren't very many, there were a handful of them, and those were reviewed by the council in June. That original document, those original documents are included as Exhibit 4 in your Agenda Bill. As you might recall, the council accepted many of Ecology's changes, but then also had some of your own language that you submitted as an alternative to Ecology, and that's in a letter from Mayor Bassett to Ecology in July of this year, and that's Exhibit 5 in your packet. Ecology then reviewed all the proposed changes containing the mayor's letter and has accepted all but one of the changes proposed by the council back in July. I think that's, that's pretty good odds right there. And that, as I mentioned before, was related to dock width, and we'll get to that in a minute. Ecology's letter accepting those changes is in your packet as Exhibit 6. So the next step in the process is for council to adopt the proposed ordinance. That ordinance then gets transmitted to the Department of Ecology, and then Ecology reviews the ordinance, assumably approves the ordinance, and then the new SMP is effective on the date that it's approved by Ecology. And that would take several weeks to several months, depending on workload, Ecology. The components of the SMP, the five items on the left are what is contained in the ordinance. So there's, as I said before, there's a series of regulations, a shoreline designation map. We have some permit review procedures that had to be updated. And then there's policies, a new element to the comprehensive plan, a new shoreline element that replaces the existing one, as well as a shoreline restoration plan. That's, that comprises the actual SMP. But there's also the records supporting that SMP. You don't actually adopt the record, it's just there as support documents. And when we submitted the SMP to Ecology for review last year, it was over 6,500 pages of paper. Luckily, Ecology was able to accept electronic versions of that. And the record includes all those items on the left, plus a shoreline inventory and analysis document, a cumulative impacts analysis, the CIPA documentation that the city did, and all of the public involvement documentation. Now to the proposed changes in the ordinance. As staff was doing our final review of the draft ordinance, we noticed that there were six definitions that had been left out of the draft ordinance, even though they had been accepted by the council in 2012, and those are the, the ones listed on the left. In addition, we are recommending repeal of definitions of finger pier and marina, simply because they're not used in the draft SMP nor in title, nor in the municipal code. So they're definitions that don't need to be in the code, we're just trying to clean that up. We've discussed these edits with the Department of Ecology. They have accepted these and we've incorporated them into the draft ordinance in your packet. So these are already there, there's, there's no more action you need to take to add these to the proposed ordinance. The larger issue is dock width. This slide shows a brief history of the issue, starting with the current SMP. So the one in place today allows an eight-foot wide dock to be built within 30 feet of the ordinary high watermark. The planning commission recommended maintaining that standard, and their recommendation to you in 2011. The document that the city council sent to Ecology, or passed to send to Ecology in August of 2011, reduced that dock width to four feet. When we came back to you with Ecology's required and recommended changes earlier this year, council's response back to Ecology was that you wanted a five-foot dock width, and the rationale you gave at that time had to do with safety, both for, for example, parents with children, and then also accessibility issues for ADA and disability issues. Ecology then responded back to the city. We've had several meetings with Ecology staff on, trying to get Ecology staff to agree with what the council wanted. Ecology then responded with several ways in which a five-foot dock width could be achieved. First, I'll say that the, Ecology still wants a four-foot wide dock as the baseline, so anyone coming in with a new dock would get four feet wide within the first 30 feet, unless the resident of the property has a permanent ADA placard. Or, in the case of non-residential, so for example, shore clubs or public parks where compliance with ADA is required, the dock could go to five feet wide. The other criteria that would allow a five-foot wide dock is if the water depth dropped off fairly steeply and the number there is, if the depth was four point, when the depth gets to 4.85 below ordinary high watermark, 4.85 feet below ordinary high watermark, then the dock can go out to five feet. The other criteria that Ecology suggested or agreed to is if you have an existing dock today, and that dock is six feet wide or wider, and you wanted to do major repair to it or replace that dock, it could be replaced at six feet in width. So it would not have to go down to the four or five feet. If your dock currently is less than six feet in width, then you need to meet those standards on the, the upper part of that chart in red. So our recommendation tonight is simply to provide direction regarding the dock width issue I just went through, and the proposed definitions, and then set Ordinance 13C12 for second reading and adoption at your next meeting. And then to help you through the dock width discussion, this is the actual language that's in the ordinance, just cut and paste here for your discussion. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I will await your direction on dock width and definitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, you have questions? Let's just start off here.
Scott, just on the, on the other things that we had asked for in vegetation, that was all accepted and?
Yes, all accepted.
Okay. And, on the, on the dock width, it's, what is, what is DOE, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around what DOE is saying. So, you know, John Smith builds a dock and, and does not happen to have anyone who's disabled when they build a dock, but then they sell the house and, you know, John Wilson buys the house and John Wilson happens to be disabled, and so they would, can they do anything about the four-foot dock they've now built, or they're stuck with the four-foot dock?
They, they could replace that four-foot width with five-foot width at that point if they wanted to.
But they'd have to basically tear down half the dock to be able to do that?
Potentially, yes.
Well, they would. I mean, as I understand it, since it would be a re, the only way you can, if I understand what this thing says, is that to get to the point where you can evaluate yourself with that five-foot rule, you'd have to be at the over 50% tear out, or call what you want. I don't think you can, you can do a repair of an existing four-foot dock that's just in, just, that's less than 50% and increase it to five foot.
Well, the four-foot dock assumably would, would comply with these new standards from the beginning.
Right.
Because it's only four feet wide. And if somebody wanted to make it five feet wide, they could simply get a permit to do that. You know, maybe the, maybe the stringers, I don't know how they, technically how it would be built to five feet wide, if they'd have to remove piling, or if they could just have it cannibally over, or something like that. But they would be able to get a permit to do that.
I don't, I mean, Katie may want to look at that, but I don't think that's what it says. I think you'd have to cross the 50% threshold before you could get a permit to widen the dock. Because the only time that 50% looks like it could, the only time that Table D, what the, what the ordinance says is, it says if you are doing more than 50%, it refers you back to Table D, and then Table D then says that's when you can, if you meet one of these things, but you only get to Table D if you do more than 50%.
But Table D would also, also apply to new docks, too.
I understand that, but that's, this is an existing dock that's been built in 2014, and then three years later, someone moves in there who wants a wider dock because they're disabled. I don't see any way they could do it without meeting the 50% rule to, to get to, to get back to Table D effectively, unless I'm missing something by the way this is drafted. I, I'm just, the.
I, I understand. I, I, I understand your point, we'll look into it. Mike?
Scott, the replacement of existing allowing six-foot width, can you explain why we've landed on that and not something like four or five? Because I'm having a hard time understanding, how do we get to know net loss, and how does the math pencil out if people can essentially replace and kind if the bulk of the docks are at six feet roughly?
Sure. I, the reasoning there was if somebody currently has an eight-foot wide dock, but they would have to go replace it with a four-foot wide dock, it would be less likely that they would make a voluntary choice to replace their dock. So they might, they might just replace a piece here or a piece there, or maybe not replace it. So you end up with an older eight-foot wide dock that may not have any grating in the decking. And our feeling was that having a little bit less of a drop, if you will, in terms of the width of the dock going from eight to six, would be more encouraging to people to replace the older docks that we really want replaced, and it would be slightly more environmentally friendly than, than forcing people to go jump down from eight feet to four feet. Mike?
So if you have a seven-foot dock, eight-foot dock, whatever, you can't take advantage of the fifty percent rule? Don't we have a fifty percent rule where you can repair, replace fifty percent of your existing dock as is?
Can you answer the beginning of that question, only about the seven feet to eight feet?
So, refresh, it's my recollection that we have a repair standard, that if you repair, you can repair up to fifty percent. It's kind of wishy on how that fifty percent is determined, and preserve the dimensions of your dock.
Okay.
Is that basically the way the repair goes?
If it's less than fifty percent.
If it's less than fifty percent.
Right. I'm going to ask George to answer that question for me.
Yeah, that's correct. So, yeah, less than fifty percent, that's correct. So you could keep that seven-foot wide dock at that point. If you do fifty percent or more, then you'd have to come into compliance with certain standards, which includes those widths and those, you were asking before about that, those are the standards.
Well, that might answer my question. So in practice with this width, if you have a dock that's seven percent, uh, seven gradeways and six-foot wide, let's say seven-foot wide, isn't this requirement saying that you have to bring it down to six foot?
If you do, if you're doing a repair or replacement with more than fifty percent, yes.
Where does it say more than fifty percent? Or how does that determine? I don't, do I see that on?
Page thirty. Right in the middle of the page, it's paragraph IX.
It's very oddly worded. During the previous five years from what? I mean, if you're presuming you're talking about a, if, if you're doing something in, in what you're doing then, and in combination with what you've done during the previous five years exceeds fifty percent, I think is what you want to say, it's just a very oddly worded.
I think that wording is actually really great, because council added that originally. Originally, it, DOE had asked it just be fifty percent for in perpetuity, and then council added the five years.
No, five years is fine. I just, it's just, it's an odd way, I think Bruce was the one who, I think, actually suggested that the five-year standard at the time, and it was, it's just-
You did.
You have a better memory than I.
But it was just, it's just, it's oddly, I agree with the concept, it's just the language itself is sort of, during the previous five years from what event are you talking about? Is it from applying for a permit, or from during?
We were interpreting that as a rule in five years.
Well, I agree with that, but it's, but, during the previous five years from, from when?
When they keep, when they come in for an application.
Right, that's exactly, that's, that's what it should say.
And, and if council nearby, we, we can clarify that, that's easy to do.
So what I'm hearing is that this description of replacing a dock that's wider than six foot is caveated, that you don't have to bring it into six foot if you have a dock that's wider than six foot, and you're not replacing, repairing over fifty percent.
That, that's right. It's, it's basically the concept of legal nonconformance.
Okay. Another question is, I'm uncomfortable with not recognizing that someone with disability could move into the house after the present owner, and I don't understand the 4.85, the issue staying out of the water, staying out of the cold water. I don't see how the depth is, is relevant. And I don't see, I don't agree with, well, it's my statement, it's not a question. You know, I, that's not a question.
Debbie? Uh, thank you, thank you for your, pausing. Debbie?
I'm going to channel council member from for a moment. When, when she discussed the issue, it was ADA, and it was also young children. Obviously, young children grow up to be young adults and bigger people, and, and maybe the width isn't quite as substantial. Was there any feedback then from Ecology on the issue, or the safety issue for young children in addition to ADA concerns?
And we have Ecology present too, so, but, but, no. They, they thought that the forefoot was accurate, was okay. Is that correct, Barb? I just want, I don't want to misrepresent what we had in our discussions, but-
What we had in our discussions, what we-
You need to-
Barbara, if you could.
So, so in the discussion, what we looked at was what would be the trigger to allow a broader dock during that first thirty feet, and one was the, the, can you even say it? Bathymetry, sorry. So the drop-off, because Mercer Island has that unique feature where there are deeper drop-offs, particularly on one side of the island, and that was what the feds, I'm sorry, the federal government thought would be okay to allow for a broader dock at that point, because it wouldn't have the impact it would in the more shallow waters. The other trigger was what, what we ultimately had the discussion about had to do with, how would you show somebody was disabled or there was ADA compliance needed? And with regard to children or senior citizens, I think we were able to come to agreement on what would be the trigger. Is that fair? All right. Except to say that with-
Barbara, would you just introduce yourself?
Barbara, with the Department of Ecology, the shoreline planner for the city of Mercer Island, from Ecology.
Thank you.
So what is our partners in regulations is the federal government, in terms of the Army Corps of Engineers that sets the standards, and has the science, and the National Marine Fishery Service. Both always say that if safety's an issue, you can put railings up. There's nothing prohibiting railings on a dock, so it's not that there isn't a response to it, and left out in the cold, but they agree with railings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With regard to this dock width, is there any other city in the area that has come to a similar accommodation?
All other cities on Lake Washington have come to a, a similar accommodation, with the exception of the bathymetry change. That allows, because you have a bathymetry, so all the others are four feet, and they're allowed to go up to two feet in additional for ADA. So this is completely consistent with all the other jurisdictions. And the way that-
Two feet or one foot? Two feet?
Did you say four feet plus two?
So four feet, you can go up to, to six feet.
Because here we, ours, it's five feet.
Right, and that's, so if you do ADA, it's five feet.
Okay, so, so why don't you start your statement again? You said other communities are-
That's what they-
Two feet for ADA.
No, it's fi, I don't have all of them in front of me right now, so each of them has their own ADA requirements that they've allowed. Oh, thank you. Yeah, we did put a spreadsheet. So the dock width after the first thirty feet from ordinary high watermark?
I think I just talked about within the first-
Yeah, up to six feet. The additional width of up to two feet.
And is their criteria the same as ours?
Yes, their criteria is the same in terms of everything but the depth. You have a bathymetry change that makes a drop-off, which makes it so that you actually have, the, the depth is to accommodate the juvenile fish, or shenochus, or passing through on the shoreline. If you have three feet of depth, that is considered one where you can start to widen the dock. You can reach that, where other jurisdictions, people without the same, homeowners without the same bathymetry change can't do that, where it's shallow all the way out.
But that's also separate and distinct from-
That's separate and distinct from all the rest of the jurisdictions, they don't have that.
So if, if I lived in city X, and I had achieved this requirement of qualified for a permanent state disabled accommodation placard, et cetera, I were in a different city, I could go to six feet, because it would be four plus two?
Yeah, it's up to two feet.
Is there anything that determines where it lands between four and ultimately six feet? Could somebody come back and say you get four and a half feet, or five feet? Or is the option four feet or six feet with an ADA?
So what we've taken with this, so they can go up to what they need, up to a maximum of six feet, so a maximum of two feet they can get with what, what meets their needs for the ADA compliance.
To reduce potentially a foot.
Reading through the lines, I mean, reading between the lines, these all have different planners and different city councils, different intent, but we only put up to five feet, up to two feet in addition to the four feet.
I'm going to, I'm going to take a turn here, and then we'll go to Mike. Barbara, just, well, I, I want to get a clarification, I guess, because Scott, in your, in your verbal description, I, what I heard about the depth question was slightly different than what I read, and so I wanted to understand, make sure I understand this. What I think I heard you say was that you needed to be narrow until you hit 4.85 feet depth, and then you could go wider. I think what I see up here is that no, if you hit, let's see, oh, we're on, are we on a different page? Did we change pages? No, it's, it's- Item C toward the bottom. Oh, thank you. So it says, if the depth hits 4.85 by thirty feet, you can have the width all the way out, is, was my reading of that, which is different from, once you hit the depth, you can go wider. So just help me understand which, which is it? Is it, is the expectation that you have to be narrow until you get to that depth, or is the ex?
Yes.
That's not what it says.
It's not, yeah, I don't think that's what it says.
No, it says that's one of the, that's one of three conditions on page twenty-one, twenty-two. And it's, if it, if at thirty feet, it's more than 4.85 feet, then you're allowed to be five feet for the first thirty feet, is what it says.
So I guess we, we would want to understand-
Because it doesn't do, it doesn't do any good at all for, well, it's not an ADA issue, it's a fish issue.
So I think this is a staff and, we, we conversation that needs to be had. We can clarify that. Yeah. So that's my first one. The second is, in my own personal experience, working with folks who have disabilities, or might have disabilities, having, so for instance, having an elderly person move into your home because they can no longer live in their home, might create a situation where your, your home situation, without selling the house or doing anything, changes fairly rapidly to having an ADA person there. Similarly, that person might then have to move on to nursing home or something, or retirement home, and now you no longer have an ADA person there, and there hasn't been any major change to the homeownership or anything. I, I'm far from being a dock builder, but I have this simplistic view that you put pilings in, you put stringers on the pilings, and then you put decking across it, and that if you are trying to change from four feet to five feet, or back again, you might have a really major redo project, not a simple project. I mean, of course, getting ADA person in your home is sort of few railing, or, um, simple things at your house, this could be huge if I'm not mistaken, but I'm, I'm completely guessing. So I'm looking for help with what's, what's the level of difficulty in changing one's dock width?
Your question, Mr. Mayor.
Looking for help, what's the level of difficulty in changing your dock width? So we, we did, we did check with a dock builder today, who said it would be about eight to ten thousand dollars to make those kinds of changes. That, that's a rough ballpark number.
I, I don't know how you, I mean, it would, I will say it will be significant. It would be prohibitively significant. I mean, you're going to redo the whole, you're basically have to redo your whole dock. I mean, eight thousand dollars for dock width, that might get you, that won't get, that won't get you anything.
Doesn't get you your permit, probably.
Yeah.
I didn't include the permit, before the time that we were here to get the permit.
If Scott went out and talked to a dock builder, that's the data he was given.
That's right.
And he didn't call up council member Ciro to get a different set of data, he called a dock builder whom we deal with. So try to stick with the data, now you don't, you may not believe it, but that is the data.
I appreciate, Scott, you doing that, but I don't believe that. No worries.
And thank you for doing that. I did ask the question earlier, and I appreciate you getting that information. I will save my last question, let Mike have a go here, and then anyone else who wants to.
Barb, let's get to the six versus five-foot issue, because we've spent a lot of time, as you can notice from our powerpoints, we were at four, and then we reached some accommodation for ADA, based on ADA requirements, which we all understood to be at five feet. And so now I'm a bit at a loss as to why now we're talking about potentially expanding it to six, where I would agree that going from four to six is probably a much more expensive retrofit, but certainly going from four to five is not. So my two questions are, one, why are we even talking about up to six feet for ADA when we had reached an aggron five? And two, it's my understanding going from four to five would not involve any replacement of piers or stringers, but would simply be a cannibal of about maybe four inches on either side of the stringers to accommodate an additional one foot for ADA requirement?
Correct. And then, okay, so to give you, for example, Hunts Point and Yarra Point, the language from their SMP, additional width, so they have, for ADA compliance, additional width up to two feet, may be allowed in the first thirty feet when it is the minimum necessary to develop consistent with ADA standards. So that's how the ADA standards are drafted in their SMPs. I, I hope that, I mean-
I know, but, you know, I know in a competition with Hunts Point, I'm more looking at what really is the core requirement for ADA compliance?
Five feet. In fact, it may be four feet, but five feet gives you, when you look at the federal requirements for ADA, five feet would be the turnaround, to give the turnaround with the wheelchair. And they're, they're going to have that when they get out to six feet anyway, if they went all the way out to the six feet. But if you have wider, because you do, are allowed six feet after the first thirty feet. But if you can allow them wider before that, they don't have to get all the way out to the six-foot portion to turn around.
Right, so just to clarify, so the federal requirements for ADA are five feet?
Right.
And for some reason, there's been some provision for Hunts Point, quite frankly, you know, that's between you and Hunts Point. We're trying to do the best we can here for not only our citizens, but also for the endangered species living in our backyard. So if we have an ADA issue, it's my understanding five feet would comply with both requirements.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think, could you read the Hunts Point language again that you read? If I understood, I'd like to hear it again, just-
Sure. Additional width up to two feet may be allowed in the first thirty feet when it is the minimum necessary to develop consistent with ADA standards.
I, I think my interpretation of that would be that if AD, federal ADA says you get to five- to five feet, then you can't go to six feet, you can only go to the five feet that ADA says. I mean, it could say, you could go out to 50 feet as long as it's the minimum for ADA, but since ADA says five feet, that's all you get.
But that makes no sense anyway, because ADA standards don't apply to a private dock, so I'm not sure what that means.
Well, it does give you standards for safety that accommodate disabled persons.
So the standards then for public?
Standards for public dock, and then it's...
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, other questions? All right, I'm gonna come up with another one here then. So Scott, I asked you this earlier too, I wanted to get a sense of what fraction of the docks we have on the island that are in this small and might need to get bigger or change with ADA, and what fraction of our docks are large, and we're looking at getting them down to the six foot mark, so that I could get a sense of the relative value from environmental perspective on that.
Sure. And this is based off of GIS analysis, a photography analysis that our IGS group did, so it's, it's not exact science, we don't keep all this data in the database. What they came up with is that 46% of the docks on Mercer Island are six feet in width or wider, which means 54% are less than six feet wide. And if you want raw numbers, 366 are six feet or wider, and 311 are less than six feet.
Hmm, that doesn't work. The numbers...
Oh, I'm reading off of what I was given, so...
Yeah.
It might be reversed there.
Okay.
But 46% of six feet or wider is correct.
Okay. And do, and I also asked you, and this was a bit of a flyer question, that you thought there might be an easy answer, the number of ADA households on the island or ADA citizens?
This is kind of a stretch, but I'll give you the numbers. In talking with the department that issues, the State Department that issues those placards, placards are good for five years, so if you take a five-year period, which we did, figure out how many placards are issued to Mercer Island addresses in each of those five years, you can total those up, that comes up to between 2,500 and 3,000 placards is what we're estimating. And approximately 9% of the lots on Mercer Island are waterfront lots, so just doing some math, comes out to maybe 250 or so, give or take. People living on the waterfront might have those placards, and that's just assuming straight math. It could be three people, it could be 3,000, we don't know.
But it tells me it's not 10, it's not 20, it's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
And I don't know whether it's 200 or 300 or 100, but it's a bunch, so...
We should know the number for the whole island.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I don't know what to make of all that.
Are we asking, are you going to give us opportunities or prep us or prompt us for questions on all the different changes? Is that what you're asking, or simply just...
You know, we haven't tried to structure this yet. So let me suggest for a moment that this definition issue seems like kind of a no-brainer. Maybe we take that deal with it, and then try and figure out how to parse this dock width question. After we do that, you guys okay with doing that, definitions off the table? Or Mike, did you have something on the definitions you wanted?
Just had a question on the dock width, Scott. So if we go from a dock that's six feet wide or greater, what's the ability to bring that down to five feet without a significant cost?
Are you asking a practical standpoint or regulatory?
No, practical.
I don't know. George might know.
So the dock builder is, has arrived, so he does a lot of work, he might be able to answer that better than anybody, give some specifics if you, if that's the pleasure of the council.
I would certainly be interested to hear, if you don't mind sharing some wisdom with us. If you could introduce yourself.
I will. I'm Ted Burns. Do you want to state the question again, please?
So we're looking at a remodel, so I come in and I've got a dock that's seven feet wide, but assume for the moment that the remodel standard would be that I need to retrofit it down to five feet, so what's the ability to do that?
And forgive me, but what I'm gonna try and do is expand this question a little bit, to, we're dealing with this question of changing dock widths, and so it would be helpful if you could just give us some guidance as to how easy or difficult, or what the, you know, what the big factors are in that, in general terms, or if there are specific things that make it easier or harder.
I have to, maybe George can answer this, I have to ask you a question, define the width of a dock.
From six feet to four feet or five?
No, is it the, is it the deck, or is the structure?
Let's go with the decking, because usually the piles are under that decking though.
Okay, so you could go down to five feet, not overly expensive if you leave the piles in the same location, but the city would then have to define the dock width as being the deck?
Yeah, and...
And I don't know if the federal government considers the width to be the deck, or if the state, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife considers the width to be the deck, because they have codes also.
I think that's a good point, that's what we were talking about when we were coming up with the $8,000 to $10,000. That we were talking about earlier today on the phone, which is, so the width of the dock is measured basically where those piles are, so you're gonna have to move the piles on one side of that dock to, for the first 30 feet. So let's say you've got a 100-foot long dock, which is allowed, and you need to move the 30, 30% of the dock, the first 30 feet, from six feet to, let's just say, four feet. I don't think there's much cost difference from, you know, six feet to five or four, right? So if you had a...
Again, George, it would depend on if you have to reset the piles, because if resetting the piles became the issue also, I can't do that without a SEPA review, so it opens up a whole different permit review also.
So let's check that box of yes, because as I'm aware, and you've got more experience than I do on doing, redoing these docks, which is, the vast majority of the docks have the piles at, let's say, eight foot wide, or something real close to it, right?
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to reset those piles on one side of it.
You'd have to, right, and driving new piles, we have two issues. One is pulling existing piles and is, does not, or does, I think it does trigger a SEPA review, driving new piles also triggers a SEPA review, but now we're going under the perception that the magic location is 30 feet, which it's not. In the 1970s and 80s, our spans between piles are probably 12 feet, so now you're at 36 feet.
And I think Ted, you and I were talking before about a span of 30 feet for the first like piles, but let's look at it if piles are 18 feet.
Okay.
So you could have piles within the first 30 feet every 18 feet.
Yes, and 18 feet is the magic number with the other agencies.
So, I mean, you're talking about moving piles, just to mobilize your barge, how much does it cost to, just to mobilize the barge to go to someplace on the island?
Right, there's a difference between what it costs, what we charge, we charge $1,000.
What do you charge?
We charge about $15,000 to show up, but if I could, before we even get to mobilizing, and George hears me worried about this every day, there's about a $5,000 to $10,000 per minute charge before we even engage in this activity.
So I'd like to back up for a second, because what we're trying to do is figure out whether we can make changes without a lot of pain, and what's being teed up here is a lot of pain, as I understand it. It seems to me that you leave the piles wide, and you make the deck narrow, and you achieve, this is not ecology guy, but maybe Barbara, you want to respond, but my thinking is that you want to get that deck narrow, but you don't really care how far out those piles are. Am I wrong in thinking that the simple solution here is to narrow the deck but not move the piles?
And Eric, I think, maybe if I ask Eric of this question, because I know he and I were talking about that at one point too, and so I certainly want to put Barbara on the spot then, but maybe Eric can address that one.
And if you could introduce yourself too?
Hi, good evening, excuse me, my name is Eric Stockdale, I'm the section manager of the shorelands program here at the Bellevue Regional Office.
Welcome, thank you. So you, I think, heard my question, I can re-speed it if you'd like, but it's, is it deck width, or is it piling width and deck width that's relevant here?
It seems that the overriding issue with a dock is the shadow footprint that it has in the nearshore environment, and the disruption that that has on the behavior of fish. And so it, I would, I would submit that at noon, what is casting the shadow in the nearshore is the decking more so than the piles. Now, as the sun changes, that, that shadow is gonna move, but really, it's, it's the width of the dock that I have always thought of as being the area of concern, because if you look at the regulations, it's really the width of the dock, and it's the width of the walking surface that is really what is driving the design. Now, I understand what, you know, I failed to catch your name, what you were saying, which is, that is also the spacing of the piles is also influenced by that, and so coming up with, with a design that allows for that is something that other people that are trained in that really need to weigh in on. But it's really, to me, it's the width of the walking surface that we're talking about.
So you're supporting my theory here, based on very little, that, that leave the pilings out, move the deck in, you've achieved most of what you wanted to achieve at a far lower cost than by mobilizing his piling moving equipment?
I would think so, yes.
How far over does the average surface hang?
I don't think we're looking at this, I mean, in practice, you have stringers, okay, so if you're talking about minimizing, bringing in the width, you're gonna have to bring those stringers in, and then you trip the 50%, and the regulator or the DSG person is gonna say, yeah, I understand you want to bring it in, but to do that, you're gonna have to, from a practical, you're gonna have to bring the stringers in, and then he's gonna say, but then you're replacing or repairing more than 50%, so you have to bring, you have to bring everything in compliance. So, you know, it's so easy to say, well, just bring your dock in from eight foot to six foot, or six foot to five foot, and it's easy for us to say, just do it, but in practice, you start tripping these other F then statements, especially the 50%, and then the owner is, we've lost the spirit of what we're trying to obtain.
Right. Well, and the condition of the pilings is gonna be one of the big issues for any dock replacement, right? I mean, it really is fact-specific, location-specific as to how old it is, and what material they're made out of and so forth. But creosote pilings are, are not allowed in freshwater anymore, you have to replace them with concrete.
But I guess to echo what Bruce was, and I were getting at, was, is there a, an easier and more practical way with a retrofit to go from a six-plus wide decking material down to something around five feet? So that that way, you know, we're accommodating either present or future ADA requirements, and still having enough, still minimizing the deck shadow to meet ESA issues in the shallow water. And it sounds like there is, and I guess the one question would be, if you've got some decks that are well beyond six feet, that piles may be spaced too far apart, and that may be a site-specific problem, but it sounds like, based on the numbers, that given what we know, to be able to retrofit from six feet down to five feet is not gonna be that problematic.
This is a, this whole discussion is convoluted, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You've got this Orwellian, this is what people go crazy about government for, you've got a situation where if you've got a dock which is six feet, existing dock which is six feet or wider, this ordinance you've got in front of us would allow you to maintain it at six feet, you'd have to drop it down to six feet. If you're five foot 11 in your dock, then you have to drop down to four feet, unless you happen to have someone who lives there with an ADA permit, and then you can go to five feet. But if you are stuck at four feet, then, and if someone then moves in with an ADA permit, there doesn't seem to be any way you can do that to go back up to five feet again unless you go and rebuild the dock again. You know, this is weird, I mean, it should be something pretty simple that if you're, I don't understand this notion that if we allow someone who's got a six-foot dock, they can keep a six-foot dock, but they got a five-foot 11 dock, they gotta drop down to four feet. Why in the world would we do that? And why do we create this weird situation of, if someone happens to be living in a house that has an ADA permit, or has an ADA decal right now, then they can build at five feet, but if they don't, they can build at four feet, but then if someone moves in with an ADA decal, they can go up to five feet, when that person moves out, they don't have to tear the dock down, they don't go back to four feet. I mean, this is craziness. I mean, why do you guys do this? Just have a standard system.
Calm down, we're trying to find compromise here that works, right?
Well, and my father's ADA needs are different than one of my staff, they both have a placard, my father did until he passed away, so ADA standards are not uniform, and it's not crazy, it's very sites, it's person-specific, and it depends on their needs. So railings for some people are much more indicated for ADA standard, for ADA needs, than the width of a rolling surface for a wheelchair.
But we should have a system which uniformly applies to property owners, and it shouldn't be based upon what exists at any given moment in time, because houses are sold, people's health changes, and we shouldn't be, we don't do our building standards that way, we don't have a building standard which says that if you happen to have someone living in a house who is in a wheelchair right now, then you have to build a house in one way, and if you don't have someone with a wheelchair in there, you build a house in a different way. That's not the way we do any other building standards in the city or in the state. So why, why are we suddenly doing some of this, this unique standard for dock? I mean, I just, it escapes me completely. Now, I understand, I think we're doing a great job at bringing things down to six feet, I, it would make perfect sense to me if for everything else, you set it at five feet for new construction, but, I mean, I just, this is just such a weird system that we've come up with here.
Question for Eric, so Eric, what if we agreed to everything at five feet, both new and remodels?
Well, yes, it is, because they're in the room.
Well, one of the things that I can't speak to that you would have to ask the National Marine Fisheries Service about is whether or not they would sign off on, on something that doesn't comply with the regional, the dock RGP, the regional general permit for docks on Lake Washington, I can't speak to that. We're trying to do things consistent with that.
Well, we have a, an exit ramp in our draft plan, which essentially states if that facility needs a permit through the Corps and in consultation with NIMPs, then it meets those requirements. So, and I'm comfortable with that, but what I'm interested in is, you know, I'm trying to find some compromise language which is practical, as well as easily implemented. And to what extent we can remodel existing dock structures, and that's really where I'm getting at, is, you know, the docks that are six feet or greater, to what extent we can get those down to five feet, then we've got a chance to do the math and end up at potentially knowing that loss, but without doing that, I don't see how we're gonna get there. So I guess my question, instead of a statement, is, could we have, could we have as part of this plan that the new docks have the same standard as the remodels, which is not unlike, you know, what we do with our building code?
Maybe the other way around, will you?
Well...
I think he means the other way around.
I think he doesn't, and I think that's going to become another point of contention here on the council.
Before we lawyer this up, yeah, yeah. Let me, let me add, new to it to death. Let me be real clear what the question is. So we have one standard for new and for remodels, and that's five feet. So can we do that?
Does that make sense?
I'm not looking at you anymore. He's going to need him either death.
What we've been trying to achieve as an agency is consistency across different jurisdictions on the lake. And you understand why we're trying to do that. And if we were, if we were to start you at five feet, we would be treating you differently than other jurisdictions that we, we're, I'm looking at the standards for Kirkland, Kenmore, Hunts Point, Bellevue. Bellevue is not adopted. Renton and Seattle, where they're all starting at not only four feet, but equally important, the graded or the light permeable surface on the lake, and going to a six-foot standard after 30 feet. So what you're saying is, why can't we start at five feet?
No, what I'm saying, Eric, is, so let's roll into that a little bit more. So for the new, I understand the four feet versus the five feet. So there is a distinction there. But for many jurisdictions, not unlike Miss Ronan, we've got roughly 50% of docks that are six feet or greater. So what I'm trying to do is find a way, how do we get those six feet or greater down to, you know, five feet as opposed to saying you can just replace to six feet?
Well, we are saying that you can get, we're agreeing that if you're six feet or more, that you can go to six feet.
I understand that. But my question is to have one standard for new and remodels, and that would be five feet. And my guess is, doing the math, that we have a better chance of getting the no net loss if we did that than if we did this.
Yeah, because most, Barbara, help me here, but the number of new docks that are estimated in the city are...
Very few.
About 10. So really, we're not talking about new docks. What we're really, when over a 10 or 20-year permit history, you're looking at the remodels. So you're really looking at number two.
Yeah. So, thank you. I followed you after a bit. So Rich was over here grumbling about where we were going with this. And so I turned it, I said, fine, help me figure out how we move forward. So your, first your analysis of where we are is that we've thrown ourselves directly into the negotiation.
What was teed up to you by staff was the initial read of a final set of negotiations and regulations for our SMP for you to review and ultimately approve. What you have done, probably not intentionally, but inadvertently, you now have engaged, started negotiations with the Department of Ecology on a new set of regulations. What I'd suggest, it sounds like you're not ready to adopt the regulations as they're written. You would like to see some changes. So I would urge you to send this back to staff and Ecology for more discussions. It doesn't sound like it's going to take a lot. It's going to take some, but not a lot. But I think we need to do this with them, not the council. What you need to do is tell us, staff, what are your goals? And you get agreement amongst you. Mike was very clear. He has some very clear, precise goals where he'd like to see this go. And I bet we could get there. But what we would need to know is the rest, are you in line with Mike? That's why I would spend your time, is trying to make sure you are clear where you want to end up. We'll go get there with Ecology. But I think having five different negotiations with Ecology going on right now is probably about the right process.
Rich, I appreciate your frustration, but it's a minor change that we're asking. And so I'm not requesting that we throw it back and wait for negotiations, you know, a couple of months from now. You know, we've got our second reading.
It ought to be done within days.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's like, I say, we just get on it, get it done. And it's not, I think your proposal is fairly small, but I think I've heard five or six fairly small little things that need to be fixed. And rather than try and do them all here, and then you guys debate each one, just give us a sense where you want us to go, and we jump on it, we get it done, and we bring it back to you in two weeks.
Okay, so Eric, I'm going to let you off the hook here, at least for the present. We might call you back. But thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
And we'll try and take this to a conversation amongst ourselves. And so, first of all, I'm going to go back to, can we agree with the definitions? We're just fine. Anybody, anybody disagree with the definition?
I had a question on the feasible definition, question or statement on the feasible. There's no mention in here on whether something is feasible about the page 33, sorry, exhibit three, page 33. There's no mention in here on a recognition of the individual's property or the individual's, it's all ways against public costs and public benefits. Is there no consideration on individuals' right to build their dock? Well, actually, there is no recognition of individuals' aspiration to build their dock or to repair their dock. Should there not be?
I'm afraid I don't know the history behind this definition. This is something that the council had accepted over a year ago. So we just simply brought it forward.
I thought that was one of the changes that you...
Well, feasible, it's a definition that was left out of the package, that it left out of the final ordinance. We're just adding it back in. And George?
It's straight out of the ESM.
Oh, okay.
It's straight out of the Shoreline Management Act.
Okay, so therefore it's correct. Is there a recognition? How do we recognize the individual property owner's right to develop his dock? You know, I'm not saying that's the overriding factor. I'm not saying that's the factor. I'm saying there has to be some additional variable in there in the equation for the individual's right to develop his property.
Let me make sure I understand the question. You're asking, how do we add property rights into the state law definition? Is that right?
Well, into this definition on exhibit three, page 33.
So, councilman?
Whether that's state law or whatever, I don't know. But I'm looking at this definition.
Councilmember, sir, the Shoreline Management Act is the state law on it, and then we are required to plan underneath that act, which is why we were seeking consistency in the definition so that there weren't incongruities between how the state defined feasibility and how the city defined feasibility. And so when you're doing regulation, I don't think looking in the definition, you're going to, you can insert property rights in something that's already been legislative, enacted upon by the state legislatures. I think that that's something, that's a bigger overarching goal that you're seeking, which comes about through this legislative process and through how these regulations are applied. So I guess I'm a little at a loss at what you're seeking. And again, this is just being put forward because this is what the state's determined the definition of feasibility is, and we're trying to be consistent so that we don't create that unfairness.
Okay. Well, then maybe, maybe we should have said, these are straight from the SMP, and we defer to the SMP, the state SMP. I didn't see that.
Yeah, we're just adopting language here that already exists with the state, right? So, okay. Any other questions on definitions? Can we dispense with those? All right. We're good on definitions, Scott, both the additions and the deletions. Okay, we're going to come back now to this question of dock width and trying to get to our intent. Do you want to try and parse this?
Well, let me try one statement that I think I called out of the discussion. You are concerned about the complication of changing a dock width in that area between five and six feet. And you would like to see language that helps make it, for the property owner, make it a sensible and not, you know, incredibly difficult permitting and construction process. So if you said that was your goal and sent us off to talk with Department of Ecology, I'd say that's a pretty good goal. In that area between five and six feet, find a more simple regulatory framework for the property owners, from the property owner's point of view. We're satisfied the science is going to support the width between that five and six. We don't have to argue science. It's more about just implementation sensibility. Give us that goal, and I think we could go do that. Without telling us what the solution is yet, just, that's the goal. Okay. Dan, then Mike, and then Debbie.
I don't know. I think we should give you specific guidance on what we want. I mean, Mike has proposed an interesting concept based upon the numbers that Scott gave to Bruce. You've got 311 docks which are six feet or greater, and 366 docks which are less than six feet. So what, what I think, what Mike, this Mike, Mike Grady seems to be proposing is a solution which effectively would say for the 311 docks, they might, if they're rebuilt someday, they might lose something in this thing. But for some, for most of the docks, presumably, I don't know if they're somewhere between five and six or where they are, but they end up at five. Those docks, the way the current thing is, if they get rebuilt, they get pushed down to four unless they happen to have someone who's living there who has an ADA decal. So it's, it's sort of a, it's an interesting, you know, what I think, what I think, what I hear Mike saying, and I don't, I know you hate Mike for words in your mouth, is that he doesn't want this thing to string out for another two or three months, and you come back, and particularly because he won't be on the council in three months.
Oh, yeah.
And he wants to deal with it while he's on the council. And we've got, we've got two more meetings left to go that we have to do that with. So I think if we're going to, we should give you, and DOE can hear it, we should give you specific guidance. If we want to adopt Mike's solution, we should talk about that. And rather than just give you, yeah, I really would not want you to come back here again with another ADA, ADA weird thing that we've got here now. It's just, that to me is, there's no interest to me.
Okay, so let me try this. So Rich has put forth a vagrant idea. Mike has a more specific idea, and I think Dan is seconding that idea for right now. So let's suggest that that idea of five-feet standard is where we're, where we think we're headed, and try and respond to that if we could. I'm going to go Debbie and then Mike Zero.
Actually, I, the original question, I had changes in the context of five foot consistently, so I am comfortable in pursuing that line of thought.
Okay. Mike Zero.
Well, the problem with that five foot is that we have so many docks that are over six foot. And where the compromise is being suggested is that with new dock construction, instead of being four foot up to five foot, but you said that there are only potential five, four docks, four new docks able? I mean, so the new docks are really not an issue because there are so few...
They're not a driver.
They're not a driver. But it's driving the compromise of the 366, actually, it could be the, it could be the 677 docks. So what we're saying is that the compromise will be that, okay, the five new docks can be at five foot, but the potential 677 docks will have to go down to five foot. So my guidance is...
That's not what he's saying, Mike.
So my guidance is, is that I want to see a way to preserve, remember, the planning session, the planning commission wanted this area to have a width of eight foot. Their recommendation was eight foot. Ms. Nightingale has showed that there are inconsistencies around Lake Washington. What I want to see is that those folks, those 366 or 311 folks with docks greater than six foot, or just with docks, can repair and replace inside that 30-foot OHWA, I think it is, and preserve their width that they have.
Hear you. And certainly the planning commission, Boston Hertz, were there. But we've, I think, gone to the point where the DOE has told us that was really a non-starter from their perspective. And so I think we have to deal within the framework that we're dealing with right now, rather than trying to go outside that framework. Or I think we end up starting over with this.
But to be realistic, you're talking between four and six feet right now. And actually, you're really talking between five and six because the Department of Ecology is willing to go to five. So...
Well, they're not.
Well, they are.
Only for, only for, for what they're saying, and Mike Zero, you misrepresent what this is saying. Because if the dock right now, an existing dock right now, is below six feet, it has to go down to four feet under the new rules if it's remodeled. That's what it now requires unless you have an ADA. So when you say that it's, in fact, it actually, what Mike Grady has proposed actually benefits the majority of the existing docks which are now below six feet. Because every one of those existing docks, right now, if they had to be remodeled, would have to go down to four feet unless they had an ADA, someone living there with an ADA decal. What Mike Grady is proposing, every one of those existing docks which is now below six feet could actually go to five feet instead of being pushed down to four feet.
Well, it's about 50/50, Dan. It's not like you've got...
No, I understand, but it's not, it's not 600 or 700 docks that would be pushed down like you were suggesting. It's, and actually, and some of the docks would be allowed to go wider, and some would be, some, the ones that are already over six feet would have to come down to five feet. But the ones that are under six feet would actually could come up to five feet instead of being pushed down to four feet.
Well, another whole point that I want to make, I mean, I'm just looking, it could be, it could be six, it could be 677. Mathematically, it could be 677.
No, because that is...
Because that is less than six foot. That means theoretically, all of those that are less than six foot could be five foot or eleven. But that's not the point what I want to make. Whenever we, in the warmth of this room, say, let's go from six to five and change the width, it's not an easy process. Where we need to go is that the property owner, the dock owner, can repair and replace at the existing dimension that they have. Keeping in mind, what happens is that they will be more prone to replace their decking with decking that lets light through. What you're going to get whenever you think that it's easy to move the width of the stringers to change the width of the deck, is that people will hold on to what they have for many, many, many years or decades longer than they would if they could repair at the width using the stringers that they have. And you would get a decking that would, by rules, by regulation, would be that see-through stuff. But if you don't, if you don't try to replace and preserve and give them the ability to preserve the width that they have, then the unintended consequence will be that you continue with that same shadow footprint, which I don't believe has been scientifically proven, and I'm sorry, there, Councilmember Gray, has been scientifically proven, will have a detrimental effect on the small fish.
The problem here is, the State Department of Ecology, under the Shoreline Management Act, makes this decision. The city council doesn't make the decision. And the Department of Ecology has not approved that those regulations anywhere on Lake Washington, or for all I know, in the state of Washington. That's not going to happen. You don't get to make that happen. You don't get to vote and make that happen. Ecology does. It's one of the few acts in the state of Washington where the state actually makes a final local regulatory decision.
Wait, DOE makes, they are supposed to base it upon no net loss of the entire island. So we show where there's, there's no net loss. There's no net loss when you replace a dock, a dock the way it is. Actually, when you repair a dock according to the regulations, you improve... Actually, when you repair a dock according to the regulations, you improve the situation to no net loss. Now, because it's not as much of an improvement as DOE wants, I think we have basis to make an argument to, as our legal opinion showed, as our legal opinion showed, we have standing to kind of say, wait, DOE, by maintaining, by giving the dock owner the authority to repair and replace to a higher standard but maintain the dimension, we're improving the no net loss. That's the basis, is that improvement of the structure improves no net loss.
Mike Grady and then Debbie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, with the data that you articulated, the six feet or wider, the 311, so that's roughly 46 percent, do you have any more detailed information about, so how much water, you know, how many are eight feet, how many are 10 feet? I don't think we do. George, George worked with IGS to get those numbers.
Yeah, we don't have it right here, but we can get that to you guys.
Okay. And the same is true of those that are six feet or less.
Right.
Because what I'm getting at is, I think what would be helpful, certainly for me, and I would assume for other council members, would be, so if we went to a uniform standard of five feet, which brought everyone into compliance at some point at the ADA requirement, what would be the net benefit of doing that versus if we had a four foot for some and a six foot for another?
And a five foot for another.
Five foot for another.
So what you're looking for is sort of, what is the weighted average of the existing dock widths on Mercer Island?
Square footage.
Yeah. So is it 4.94 or 5.4?
No, let's, let's get how many are four, how many are six, how many are eight, and so on.
How does it net out?
Yeah, exactly.
And I guess the question is, if you're asking staff to come back with that net out, I mean, we can come back to you with these standard numbers of, you know, how many are four, five, six, but...
And we can do that, but I think you're, but I think you're in a little process problem now.
Yeah. I think perhaps the answer is, our city attorney would like to speak.
(laughing) The same thing. If I could direct your attention to Exhibit 5, which is the July 1st, 2013 letter that the city sent to Ecology. And that was, if you go through and look, I think you might see you're retreading some similar ground there. And this was what the city and Ecology have been talking about with regard to the dock width.
Page 147, I think, is what Katie's referring to.
Actually, it's 133 on Exhibit 5.
Okay.
Page 133.
Yeah, there's, Table D is on 147 also. Well, Debbie, you're up. Sorry for getting way late.
It's okay. Yeah, obviously, I missed the first few years of this and the number of years involved is truly impressive. But I do have to believe that there was a certain amount of consensus that was achieved by the fact that we've come to the point where there's a first hearing. The other basic principles that I come down to is I think that the majority of the islanders, first of all, care about safety. They want to make sure that either their residents or the people who come to their homes, or even the people who may eventually purchase their homes, will have a safe water or dock experience. So I think let's give the islanders that particular credit. I think they also care generally about the environment. I think that islanders generally do want to do the right thing. I don't think that there's any particular community or group out there, be they homeowners on the waterfront or anywhere else, who are sort of an environment-bedamed group. I'd be very surprised to meet that. And I think, again, that they want to pursue an avenue that presents reasonable cost and equity. And with that, I'm just gonna encourage us to go back and look at what is reasonable within the current boundaries of the state act of the letter that we have. I think the five foot across the board could be very interesting, particularly if we can back it up with some data, based on an average of what, 10 docks a year? Is that what we heard, at most? And let's go from there. But I think we're renegotiating this thing from the ground up again and I don't think we've got that kind of time to spare.
So I'm gonna take a shot at melding what Rich has said with what Mike has said and see if I can get there. And Katie's raised a good point, which is we proposed a standard five-foot width previously and this is where we, well, we find ourselves where we find ourselves now. I think there is a consensus on this council that having multiple dock widths and dock widths that can change over time is, or that where the required, required width might change over time is not a very practical solution for our homeowners because of the lengthy process they would have to go through in actually executing those changes. And so what I think we're looking for is that staff strive to find a way to settle down this width question and not have multiple widths. And given that we can figure out what our widths are on the island and figure out from there what net gain or loss would go along with changing each of those, we can have some guess at what the overall impact would be. So staff could work with Ecology to find a nonvarying width that is essentially the minimum that meets, not the minimum width, but the minimum restriction that meets the needs of the no net loss goal of all of this. Am I capturing where you guys think we are or not?
When we last did this with, Barbara, you were here then, we tried to, we, as a council, actually made some additional offers to the state above and beyond what you had asked for in terms of vegetation. And we told you at the time that we were proposing that because we wanted you to be, to take that into account when you were dealing with the, with the width or dock question. What Mike Grady has proposed tonight is very much in that same vein. He said, you have offered to the city something which says that if you now have something over six feet or more, you can come down to six feet. And he suggested, and there might be, at least on this council that I was here tonight, three votes for that, if it was on the table right now to say we just go at five feet for everyone, so we get a consistent ordinance here for islanders. So that would be some give and take again on the part of the city. But we, we're trying to, clearly, by dropping from six feet down to five feet, we are doing something for the environment. And potentially going up from four feet to five feet, that's, that's a quid pro quo for that. Just like on the vegetation that we proposed before, we were trying to do that as a quid pro quo. And I don't know what your other cities have done in the area of vegetation, but again, I remind you that we went above and beyond what you had asked us to do in the area of vegetation. But we had in mind when you asked us to, when we did that, that you were gonna do something more in the dock. So I, I think that, you know, what Bruce has said is very right. We want some consistency on this. We don't want to confuse our residents as to what's going on. Mike has been very eloquent in terms of how you could achieve a quid pro quo here. And I think there should be a way to quickly resolve this thing. And but I, I mean, and as Rich said, we can't negotiate with you because we're the council and staff will have to do that. But I think we can sort of give you a roadmap of how we can get to a solution which doesn't put you in an odd position because you in fact will have negotiated something with the city, which, you know, the city has given something in exchange for getting something.
Mike. One other point that I think Rich will need to clarify would be that we need to define what the dock width is or how it's measured and to what extent we can do that. Something similar to measure from the utmost edge of decking material and it does not include the pilings so that it's real clear to those who are remodeling that, assuming we agree to this, that as you move it in, it's the decking material that matters as opposed to the stringers or the pilings.
Okay. Other comments? Mike Zero, I know you're not, you're not in love with this idea, so, and I don't think you're gonna get to three votes. So are we at three votes or more for going forward with this direction? And was it clear enough that you understand it or would you say you guys got to talk more so that I understand where you are before you...
Katie, I understand. Now, I think we know where Nirvana is on, the city of Mercer Island and we'll hope that it's somewhere with the Department of Ecology too. And we'll have this great Nirvana moment and next two weeks from now, there'll be an ordinance that you will adopt.
And we can sing kumbaya.
And we will. We shall overcome and all that stuff.
I would ask staff, as appropriate, using their best judgment to give us some comparisons of other cities in the area as well.
Okay.
Using their best judgment.
And you know, the last time you did that...
You got the can opener out to open the can opener.
The last time you suggested that we have some comparative data, it's, you know, what it does is it does open up another set of issues. It's what, I mean, we'll do it, just it can open up another set of issues.
I mean, I say this genuinely and that is, I don't want to run away from the truth. If it's out there and there's another city who has some relevant experience, I, just because it's painful doesn't mean you don't put it out there. It doesn't mean you act on it.
Sure. We can go find out. I think maybe what we will try to do is see if, where we get to, where is it in sort of the marketplace of agreements between cities and DOE? Is it an outlier or is it within the, the boundaries of...
Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, that's, I'm not looking for that. What I'm looking for is whether we can maximize the flexibility for our citizens. So what, instead of looking for the, you know, the middle of the road, what I'm looking for is what cities have the wider, have the most lenient regulation as far as being able to have a wide dock. And I know that Bellevue and Bainbridge are very much on leading edge of that. And I'd be interested in what Bellevue's future, where they're going, not necessarily where they are under the old, but where their intent is for, for protecting their citizens' rights. Because I think they're a little bit more aggressive than, than the others.
And Debbie, I just want to ask, so assume staff comes back with city Nirvana plus one has five-foot-six-inch docks. We've been able to negotiate the deal with DOE to get to the five-foot docks. I feel at that point like you're saying, nope, I want to start over.
It's a question of, is your goal a process or is it an outcome? And I would urge that the council focus now on trying to get to an outcome. We've been processing this for two and a half years or arguably four years. Collecting more data is part, is a process.
I guess my question is, is if we found out that there was a city that was five-foot-six, I'd want, why? And I think that's a fundamental question.
But that would be, it seems to me that would be a starting over the negotiation process.
But we started the negotiation again by the fact that we're not approving this tonight. I mean, I don't want to completely reopen a can of worms, but I also don't want to run away from comparative understanding and intelligence either. And maybe that's something that could be driven with me and I could become smarter on this. Granted, I missed the first four or six years.
I'll say another controversial thing since, you know, such a short time, I ain't said about it. You're at the point now, you're at, this is probably a little strong, you're at the hair splitting point. Collecting more data about how others split the hair, I'm not sure how, how much that will serve your purposes. You're supposed to end up being decision makers and you're at a decision point. Time to decide.
And ours was at the staff's discretion. If there was something interesting and relevant, as defined by staff, if they could please let us know.
Everybody good? Except Mike? It's 8:47, let's take a break and reconvene at, it's 8:48, let's take a break, reconvene at...
8:50.
Oh, you want to go by nine o'clock in 12 minutes?
Can you video?
Meeting will come to order again. We move now to Agenda Bill 4889, Development Services: Cost of Service and Cost Recovery Fee Reanalysis. Chip Quarter, welcome.
We are back. All right. I'm going to turn the mic over to Peter Moy and to Nate Reese, who will present their findings and an updated analysis to you. And then, at some point, you'll have questions with respect to that analysis, and once we get through that, then I'll come back, circle back with the council and talk about recommendations going forward for 2014 and beyond. Peter?
Thank you, Chip. But tonight, we're going to talk about some of the work we've done the last, basically, month or so. And just as far as the agenda goes, we're going to talk a little bit about what we were tasked to do, what some of those September sixteenth changes were, and then what our updates to those changes were. And then, third and fourth item are really timekeeping system. What is the timekeeping system? What are those issues that revolve around that particular system and how it's done? And then, lastly, let's look forward and talk about 2014 and look at cost recovery alternatives. And then, basically, you'll have some policy questions that you'll need to answer, and the staff has made some recommendations in their agenda bills. So, that's sort of the way our presentation's going to go. In terms of the study task, one of the things that we were first tasked to do was to review the changes made for the September sixteenth council meeting, and that's when this all got started. Take a look at the timekeeping system. And then, lastly, what we said we also come back and do, and so, well, let's look at the cost recovery alternatives for 2014. Since you're in the budget process now, and you're thinking about what you should do concerning these fees for 2014, we decided that we take a look and review the 2014 revenue forecast, and then maybe, again, identify some of the cost recovery alternatives. So, let's talk about the September sixteenth changes. Basically, what we found was that the director and other management level staff had administrative time moved to non-department, non-development direct services. And consequently, when you looked at those charts, you saw that the costs actually were reduced. In addition to that, some of the staff customer service time was also moved to non-development services, and as a result, there was a pretty large change. Let me just talk about the study process itself. When we started this study, one of the benefits of doing this work for you was that you had time, you were actually keeping time, many of the different cities that we work with. When we talk about building and planning and even engineering studies, most of that staff does not keep track of their time, so we thought we had something that would really work well. And this will get back to the timekeeping issues a little bit later. But we had a starting point, and throughout the study, as we went through the process, once we looked at some of the time data, we were always making some adjustments. And what happened in this case is there were some last-minute adjustments made after we'd done our report, and so, those caused a number of those changes. So, what we did is we went and took a look at all those different changes, and I think Nathan's going to go through some of those changes and talk about what those, how we updated those, and whether we agreed with some of them or not agreed with some of them.
So, just to run through these changes really quick, about what we changed back. So, as Peter mentioned before, we had some staff administrative time for the director and other managers, which had been moved to the, basically, the type of costs where they wouldn't be included to be recovered by fees. And so, we moved those costs back to overhead, like we had done before, so we reversed that adjustment. Also, some of the administrative services managers' customer service time had been moved to this place where it wasn't going to be charged. And we looked at it, and when we looked at it, we realized it was time associated with the Alum Smedsmann function that she fills, and so, that was more of a direct service to the public, so we left that time there. We also took a look at the customer service time for staff, and when they say customer service time, this is basically time spent at the permit counter, or interacting with different citizens, or other clients, or people working with the city in development. And we tried to help staff kind of make a clear line between what is related to development versus what isn't related to development. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we talk about timekeeping codes. But in order to really clean that up, we had to do a little bit of time, you could say a time-motion study, but it was more of a time-count study. But we had staff track their time for one week, basically looking at all the different interactions they had with citizens and other customers of the city. And they tracked that this activity was development-related and this one wasn't, and they counted it. And we came back and took a look at the way their time had been split between development-related services and this other category that wasn't related to development. And we adjusted those numbers so that they reflected a better understanding of what was the time spent, customer service time spent, helping people with development-related questions versus time spent just talking to customers or citizens about other activities that weren't related to development. So, after we did that, this slide shows you the revised and updated costs. So, if you just want to travel with me from the far right to left, basically, the nine-three counts in presentation, you know, we had cost recovery overall, cost recovery at seventy percent. After council moved those adjustments, the cost recovery went up to eighty-six percent, and then we went in and reevaluated and took a final look at some of that customer service time and made some other adjustments that I referred to. And so, we had a cost recovery of about seventy-five percent. Just want you to notice that the overall cost really hasn't changed. The whole thing that we've done and what we've looked at is basically just looking at how much of that cost is related to development versus how much isn't related to development. And so, in doing that, you know, we've established a point that's kind of in between where we started at, and where we finished is a little bit higher than where we started at, but that's because the information that we've used has improved. So, all right. Now, into the timekeeping issues. So, as part of this review, we worked with DSG staff to talk to them about their timekeeping codes, how they're using them, what they're using them for, and see how well they're working, basically, the quality information they're collecting. We found several things. You know, all staff really didn't understand what those timekeeping codes were for specifically. So, we recommended that basically, for every timekeeping code, staff work to clarify the definition, so everybody understands it and uses it consistently. In some cases, we needed some additional timekeeping codes, because the level of detail could be improved. And in some of the cases, we didn't need as many codes as they had, so we recommended that basically we consolidate them. So, in looking at the time codes, one of the reasons why our staff had problems with them is simply because there wasn't any definitions out there that they could refer to. It's either written out, or it was just, you know, kind of what they understood or what they were taught. So, you know, we just recommend that you basically write them down, define the definitions, especially around customer service time, because that can be awfully confusing, because sometimes there really isn't a clear dividing line, and you have to make a judgment call. Also, you know, in keeping track of your time, certain jobs, certain roles, it's really difficult to track your time. I don't know if any of you have had the experience of answering phones at a call center, but you do have staff who work, you know, at a permit counter, and they can have phones ringing, they can have people walking in and ask all different sorts of kinds of questions. So, instead of having them try to track their time at five-minute increments on different activities, we would recommend that they keep a count of all the different activity types, like phone calls, and simply make a delineation in those counts between what's related to development and what's not, and then use averages to kind of come up with the time. So, that offers them kind of a balanced way to keep track of their activities and gives us a way to figure out how much is related to development and how much isn't, but at the same time, it doesn't force them to have to track their time, which would be really, really difficult in the jobs, important roles that they fill. Also, when we took a look at some of the time codes, we found that time codes didn't really match up with the fee codes or some of the other information. And that's just one of the challenges when you're trying to track time for a development services department, because you have your fee schedule, you have the revenue codes, and then you have the time codes that staff are using. And, you know, I've been in a lot of these studies, and I have yet to ever find a place that's been able to line them all up. It's kind of like your belief in Bigfoot. Some people believe in Bigfoot, and that it's out there. And I still believe that it might be out there, but I have yet to ever find it. But we did look at Mercer Island, and we know that they're all doing a good job, you know, and most of the stuff was very close. They just needed to make a few adjustments in order to kind of capture and get everything harmonized and aligned. So, another issue with the timekeeping system is that we talked to staff, and they were very honest with us, and said, they're basically filling out these timesheets every two weeks, right before they're due. Now, when you do that, the problem is, is that sometimes human memory isn't perfect, and so, you might misrepresent things just because you don't remember them very well. So, we'd recommend that time sheets would be completed more frequently, at least weekly and daily would be better. I know that, you know, if, the longer you wait, the more, the time sheet really just becomes an estimating exercise, and it's not really a record-keeping exercise at that point. Also, for management staff, and it's just the director and administrative services manager, they are working on some specific projects, and they also do things that could be considered to be overhead. So, to help improve studies in the future, we just recommend that if they're working on what we call direct services for the public, that they track that time, keep track of it, so that we can pull it out in the future, a future study it can be pulled out, so that it's not included with overhead and put in the wrong place. So, moving past the timekeeping codes, we, as Peter mentioned, took a look at 2014 costs and revenues to take a swing at basically calculating what your cost recovery rates would be if fees basically remain the same, except with the planned inflationary increase, versus, you know, taking a look at other increases, potential increases. So, to get there, basically, we forecasted 2014 revenues. We used staff workload estimates on those, but we also used some of our own workload estimates, and took a look at that, and found that our forecast was awfully close, there was really no material difference to what staff had forecasted, which was a good sign for us. And we also took our 2012 costs that we used in our 2012 study and updated them, so that they matched the 2014 costs that'll be in your mid-buy budget. And those 2014 costs include all the additions that are anticipated to be approved despite of the mid-buy. So, this table basically gives us a look, and this is an estimate, again, because it's a forecast of both revenues and costs, of what cost recovery in 2014 could look like for building, planning, and engineering services. So, overall, we have costs of $2.3 million, plus other direct services brings us to a total, you know, anticipated cost of $2.8 million. Revenue is anticipating $1.6 million of revenue, for an overall cost recovery of seventy-two percent. And then, we calculated what the general fund subsidy would be, and overall, it looks like it's going to be a little shy of $650,000. So, our next step, basically, we wanted to help city staff, when we provided them with this, with this report, get a sense about what different cost recovery levels would be. So... So I'm going to start talking about different cost recovery levels and how much fees could be raised. These really aren't recommendations. What we were using this exercise for was to simply provide kind of a context for staff to evaluate different, and for you to evaluate different levels of the increases and what that impact would be on cost recovery and different fees. So again, these aren't recommended increases. These are just for illustrative purposes, just to kind of give you a sense about, you know, if we wanted to get to 100% cost recovery, how much would we have to raise fees on average? And again, remember, we're raising fees on average, not at an individual level. So this is the overall average fee increase that we're talking about. So since building services, just looking at this table, cost recovery is already at 87%. It doesn't take very much to get it up to 100%. It'd be a little south of a 15% fee increase overall in order to get building services up. For planning services, since we're down to 45%, we'll take a, what I would say is a considerable fee increase. Whenever you see a fee increase above 100%, that means fees need to double. So at best, they need to double plus another 25% basically. And for engineering services, since their cost recovery is at 49%, they would need to double in order to get up to 100% cost recovery. So with that first look at what it would take to raise fees for, at 100% cost recovery, we decided we'd do another exercise. And this is just, how much would your fees need to increase in order to decrease your general fund subsidy by $100,000 for each service? So for building services, since cost recovery is high, in order to reduce the general fund subsidy by $100,000, you'd have to increase fees by 8% and your cost recovery level would be 94%. For planning services, it's a little bit harder. You'd have to increase fees by 47% in order to reduce it by $100,000. And for engineering services, you'd have an average fee increase of 57%. One of the reasons why these fee increases are higher for planning and engineering isn't just because their cost recovery levels are already so low, it's because there isn't a lot of revenue in planning or in engineering services. So in order to decrease the general fund subsidy by $100,000, theoretically, you just have to work harder. You have to raise those fees a lot more because the available revenue that you're working off of is small compared to building. Building has a big pool of revenue. So in order to reduce, you know, your general fund subsidy by $100,000, a smaller fee increase can have a much larger impact on that.
Well, I've got, I have a question real quick.
Sure.
Why 300,000?
It was just an underpict, just off the top of our heads. It was just 300,000. We thought, what would it take for 100,000 for each service?
Okay. And then if 300,000, given the different proportions of the three services, you know, I wonder what the average fee increase would be if, you know, building services is 40%?
Yeah. That's an excellent, that's an excellent question. And Chip's prepared a tool, I believe, for you to enable you to take a look at that. But again, we're just trying to give you a sense so you can start to ask those questions because again, you know, fee increases on building, since there's so much more revenue available there, you know, they don't have to be as much in order to have a bigger impact on reducing the amount of general fund subsidy that you need. Peter?
The other thing too is when we were here, actually the first time in, I think it was September, early September, one of the concerns was is that you did not want to over-recover. And so that's one of the other reasons we sort of took a lower kind of estimate on this particular one, especially for building, because building is so close already. It was, and we wanted to say, okay, well, if you wanted to give yourself some latitude so you don't over-recover, should building actually accelerate more than forecasted? Then this would give you some cushion. On the other ones, you know, there's plenty of cushion no matter what you do. So, and 100,000 was a round number. That's the other easy thing to think.
Easy to ask for me. All right. Now, we also just prepared some quick graphs that you can find in the memo. And each one of these graphs, what they do is they take a look at the composition of the different costs. And if you remember back to our September presentation, when we were talking about costs, we divided them into four different kind of general categories. There was the direct cost of providing the service. There's an indirect cost. There's department or division overhead, and then there's citywide overhead. So again, direct cost is really just the simple direct cost of service. That's what it costs to put a person in the seat, to review plans, to answer the phone, to do other things. Indirect costs, those are associated with providing support services for a particular activity. So again, it's not working on the activity directly, but it's something that's vital and important to providing that service, like the permit counter, for example. They're there, they need to take in the revenue, they need to do desk permits, they do other things that are associated with a permit, but it's difficult for them, given their environment they're working, again, can be pretty chaotic, for them to assign all their time to a particular permit. Then there's department, division overhead. Basically, it's Scott, Kirsten, and other people who are the managers, basically, and the time they spend running the program. And then citywide overhead are shares of citywide costs, such as the facility, shares of human resource costs, other things that are associated with that cost of running the government. So what we did here is for building, planning, and engineering, we took a look at what our cost recovery, anticipated cost recovery levels would be for 2014. And we said, well, what would cost recovery level be if we covered all of our department or division overhead costs? And so if you look at this first one, for example, building is covering all of its direct and indirect and almost all of its department, division overhead costs, and it just needs to grow up by 1%. The cost recovery would need to increase by 1%. And it takes a particular fee increase, and that's, that's talked about in our memo. Basically, so you'd need 88% cost recovery in order to cover all of your department, division, overhead, and then, of course, 100% to cover all your costs. So for planning, right now, we're thinking in 2014, cost recovery would be 44%. And so in order to cover all the direct costs, and again, that's the cost of basically providing the service, and the direct service to the public, you, cost recovery would need to be 49%. To get to the indirect level, you'd need to be all out to, all the way up to 77, sorry, 72%. And then 88% again to cover all the department, division overhead. And again, for engineering, total cost recovery, 49% anticipated, which is covering the direct costs. In order to get up to indirect costs, you would need 66% cost recovery. And then 91% cost recovery to cover all your department, division overhead. So these graphs basically give you cost recovery targets. And so you could use them in conjunction with, you know, they basically give you a target so that you say, I want to cover all of my department, division overhead costs and indirect costs and direct costs. I need 91% cost recovery. So using that 91% cost recovery, basically, that's how you back into an overall average fee increase. So there's different levels of fee increases that are described in them that basically tell you how much fees we'd need to go up in order to get to, let's say, 91% cost recovery. And so that's the information that we provided to city staff as part of our update. And Peter, I think you'd like to step in or?
Well, just, so this sort of gives you the range of percentage cost recovery. And again, you know, last time we were here, early September, the policy was at 100%. So if you have any questions, you know, we're open for questions now. Like I said, this, this sort of gives you a range of different percentages and where, what cost you can cover, you know, notwithstanding 100%. So.
Okay. Questions, counsel?
Right? Okay. So in trying to hit the sweet spot on cost recovery, defining sweet spot is full cost recovery would be 100% if we could, on a practical basis, hit that and have a high level of confidence that we wouldn't get called on the carpet by an outside auditing. Basically, this is what this exercise, why we hired you, is to show that we have the documentation on whatever we determine, that we don't go past full cost recovery.
Right. So what we see in many cases is that the building department usually is always, almost in all the studies we've done, which, you know, range in the hundreds, you'll find the building departments generally cover probably almost high 80s and 90s, not usually 100% because they never add 100, they never add the citywide overhead. They do their department, and their department says, this is where I've got. So they're always very high. So they're always up in that 80, 95%. On planning, as well as engineering fees, what we find is that, you know, if you haven't done a cost of service study, oftentimes, planning fees are very, very low. They're down into the 5, 10, 15, low 20% for most places.
And let me interrupt you there.
Sure.
And that's a good point that I want to bring out and better fully understand. So there's no problem from a legal perspective if we're too low. There is obviously a problem if we are too high.
Correct.
Because you've been, from a probability or a confidence level, at what percentage would we be that we would have a sufficiently strong confidence level? I don't know what that would be, would be 95% confident, that we do not exceed that limit under two circumstances. One, where we go through the time and expense and trouble and bureaucracy of doing cost of service studies and tracking. And the other one, where we don't, where we choose just to have such a wide margin that we're not going to add the additional expense of having our folks do the time motion. Is that clear?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I've actually been in a court case on building fees. So one of the things that we've also observed, these are estimates. So if building activity picked up dramatically, what we find oftentimes is that you might actually start over-recovering. One of the things that we have to look at if you start having more revenue in, in a particular year and you have, is to make sure that oftentimes that revenue is really deferred, a deferred liability, or it's, I'm paying for that permit upfront. So if it looks like it has a fund balance and it's a large fund balance, people say, oh, well, you over-recovered. Well, not really. You know, on December 31st, I got this, you know, million dollars worth of fees, but the work's not going to happen until the next year. But you paid us, and for the accounting purposes, we have to do it. So maybe we're showing a million dollar surplus. Well, those are things that you have to work out. And again, part of it is just, this is the best estimate.
And those are things that, when audited,
Yes.
The auditor, being of sound mind and body, would recognize that, that timing issue and would probably give us, would be understanding.
That's what, that's what we would hope, yeah. We would argue that pretty strongly to say, look, you record the interview, you, you know, you talk about booking the revenue when it comes in or accruing it, however you do it, but the expenses to process that is.
So with all those leaving ports in mind, I again go back to the question that I really am looking for is, given the two scenarios that we might want to run the department, where we take detailed records on when and what and everybody's doing, would be one scenario. And the other scenario where we wouldn't do that.
Correct.
What would be the cost recovery on each scenario with a level of confidence that we wouldn't have a material finding from an auditor?
Well, I don't think the auditor is going to be a problem. I think it's really people's perceptions. I think, given, these are all budget estimates.
But it is, because when the staff briefs us, the, the stick, if you will, is we could get audited and we could be held liable and get sued. So, I mean, and the perception is something that the politicians here would have to deal with.
Sure.
I'm not talking about politic, about the perception. I'm talking about what percentage, under those two scenarios, would it be?
Mike, can I suggest that we hold on your question? I understand where you're trying to go. I think Chip's obviously going to come in with a proposal, which is in the agenda bill as well. Let's get to that and then try and tweak from there based on your question, if you don't mind, rather than trying to bracket this right now.
Right, because I can't, I can't tell you what an auditor's going to do. But what I can say is if we're coming in a little bit less, we're going on the best knowledge that we have at this point in time. And if, just like before, prior to the, you know, recession, the things, a lot of people, a lot of building departments were booming and it just went south very quickly. And so, you know, there's always those kinds of things that can happen. So I think what we have done is we've done an effort to make sure that we've identified all the costs to the best extent possible. And we've made some estimates based on what people that are knowledgeable, what's going on in the, in the city in terms of what the building permit load will work. And we've come up with a number that says, okay.
So I continue to, when I've talked to council members about this, I urge you not to get stuck on a cost recovery percentage or even a dollar amount, at least not at first. At first, be confident, from what you've heard from our staff and our consultants, that the methodology for allocating, for identifying costs and then allocating them out appropriately is defensible and reasonable and predictable. That's what you, that's what we need to have. We want to be as efficient about the revenue as we can, but the systems have to be right. And we've gone out and we've hired, nobody in the state is going to do it better than these guys. They've looked at our system and then they looked at it again. And that's why I urge you to be, be confident that we, our systems are right, our methodology is right. And then we can start talking about how much you want to charge on a permit fee and what dollar amount that's going to generate later, because we can do that a bunch of different ways. The first level is the systems.
So if I could, I, yeah. I think, you know, what you've presented to us is great. It's also in your report. Thank you very much for that. I think what we're wanting to do at this point is get to Chip's proposal so that we can begin to talk in terms of specifically where you're trying to go, unless you feel like there's some big piece lacking before we get there. So you tell me. Come on up then.
I'm confident going forward, they've helped us identify some problems. The course of going through this study way back when, in July and August in particular, we identified issues and knew that we had to fix them. And so we've identified some others. So I'm confident from, which is his viewpoint on this, that this is a defensive methodology.
I think we went from being pretty good. I think we're going to come out of this even better.
Yeah.
They were improvements. I don't even look at them as problems as much as system improvements.
Exactly. Not perfect. And as they pointed out, hardly anyone, you know, my old city Kirkland and other cities I'm aware of, they don't track to the level of detail that we do. And, you know, we're not going to get into the business of tracking every 10 minutes. That's crazy. But we have some ideas of how we can be better about our tracking. And they shared some of those. So going forward, what they shared with you are three different ways to approach this, this issue. Actually, it's really two different ways, assuming that you're seeking partial cost recovery, which is what staff is recommending. So let me pull it up. Okay. In the agenda bill, you will see where, I got it a little bit backwards, and the man and I talked about this earlier this morning. When Scott, Kirsten and I talked about this, we approached this, breaking DSG into its three primary service categories, building, planning, and engineering. And we established what we thought were reasonable cost recovery targets based on, talking to FCS group and a sense of what other cities have been doing. And we felt that 95% is a cost recovery target for building was appropriate. We thought for planning and engineering, where there's a significant number of permits that have a significant public benefit, it's not just purely private benefit, which is what building services is about, there's significant public benefits, that it should be something less than 100%. We picked 60. To give you some perspective, when we were talking to these guys earlier, when they had, in terms of a survey that other cities had done, especially in, in planning, engineering, and services, there's lots of cities that are right in the 40% range, some into 50. And so we were trying to hit what we thought was, what's the sweet spot in terms of what the market is doing? And we pushed it a little bit on the planning and engineering side. Now, they'll tell you, they don't have a lot of good data right now. They've been doing a lot of these studies recently. And so this is 5-year-old data. I suspect it hasn't changed much in terms of cost recovery policies, however. That's just my belief. I don't have an absolute knowledge about that. But the way I approach this, this is the way I think about it, is establish targets for building, planning, and engineering that generates, there's three revenue amounts of 115, 79, 41, which total $235,000. The simpler way to look at this, the bigger picture way is to take an overall cost recovery target across building, planning, and engineering, and set it at 82%. That generates the same amount. It generates the same amount. Okay? So this is what we're. So, this is what we're recommending to the council to react to, and I thought we'd touch on this first before we move into the other recommendations. There is no right answer. You know, I, I'm not here to say that mine is the right answer. It's not. I would, as you're saying in the bill, because I voted it, I would strongly urge you not to seek full cost recovery, seek something less than that. I think if, if you need some examples of, of permits that have a public benefit in planning services or engineering services, Scott or Kirsten could come up and address that and help paint the picture for you, but I would urge you to seriously consider what we've put on there. We think that's reasonable, and we'll see also in the agenda bill that what we want to do is do a better job of tracking our time in two thousand and fourteen, then do the study again in fifteen, and with much better data, and, I said, much better, just better data, and, and see if we need to adjust the policy at that point in time.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks. I have a question. So, again, the, the concern we have is that we're audited and we find that we've over recovered. When they do that analysis, do they just look at building services and planning services and engineering services separately? And if you've exceeded in one area, then that's a foul?
Auditors don't do that.
They look at the overall.
These, the auditors do, our, our, state auditors do not look at this in terms of over recovery. What they're looking at is they want to make sure-
If you get an allegation of over recovery, you would come in a lawsuit from a builder-
Yeah.
Who felt like the city profited on his project.
Okay.
Or didn't know that.
Or resident who's paying a permit fee.
And-
If I can just explain, the, there is a very specific RCW that relates to building permits, and so that's why we separate out the cost. So, we can't have over recovery on building services to help support planning services in the fund. And so, that's why we do this cost of service thing, so we can clearly show that based on the cost for building services, we're at this particular cost recovery rate, as opposed to saying, doing it on the whole fund and saying, well, eighty-two percent, and, you know, we're going to raise building services X amount, you know, so we can get to eighty-two percent. That's one of the key issues. So, building services is a very special thing because there's a very specific RCW that relates to processing building permits.
Okay. So, I didn't know that, that was the club. I thought it was an auditor from the outside. So, it's, the concern is getting sued by a builder or a-
Yeah, it's, it's a, just a common principle in government, local government, that we provide a service, and all that we can do in terms of charging a fee is charging to recover the cost of the service. We do that, but business licensing and a whole number of fee related in. I know you like to call them all taxes, but when they are fees, they are related to the cost of a service. And that's what this is about.
So, on these taxes?
Touche.
So, to answer my question, then, we do want to look at each individual bucket here and not the aggregate.
Well, Chip's saying we can do it either way.
Well, that's what I heard from Rich.
Yeah. You could, I think you're looking at overall aggregate, but when we really talk about cost recovery, you need to look at them separately.
Right, so if somebody's going to sue me, they're not going to-
They're not going to see you in the aggregate, they're going to see you in the detail.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so we should look at, okay, which leads to my next question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
If it's a quick one, because I'm going to Debbie next.
Well, it goes to my original question I posed to you. We need to then look at that ninety-five percent, and what level of confidence do we have that that ninety-five percent isn't going to be scrutinized as being over recovered?
Well, it isn't, because we've already identified what it costs, so we're already saying, when we did this planning process and we set the fees based on the current estimates of the workload and permit volume, we were actually coming in at ninety-five percent.
About the best defense you can have in the lawsuit is the work these guys just did for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so what you're saying is that because of the work that you've done, we could indeed have a hundred percent recovery, recognizing that that's not advisable, but we could have a hundred percent recovered on each individual one and have sound foundation to do that.
And the, the part of it is the economy. If, if all of a sudden, you know, we didn't quite estimate the number of permits correctly, we thought we'd have a certain volume and maybe the economy picked up, and all of a sudden you had a rash of, you know, of new building permits that people wanted to come in and they paid them, and we hadn't, we hadn't finished the work, and then-
What Peter's referring to is picture, you've got ten plans examiners, and your workload you predict is a hundred permits-
Right.
That they're going to deal with. The economy jets off, and all of a sudden, they got a hundred and fifty, and they work their tails off and they get more efficient. The revenue skyrockets, but the cost stayed the same.
Right.
And you could be in a position where some might, someone might argue you just profited.
Right, and, you know, that's the one thing, it's, you know, for one year, it doesn't, you know, you have to look over time, too. I mean, that's the other thing, too. There's the economy and, you know, it just, because you over recovered perhaps in one year, doesn't necessarily mean you, the next year, that it would be the same. So, so that's one of the other things, too, you know, that you're not really trying to do purposely, certainly, over recover. And in this case, based on our methodology, based on the cost we've identified, this is our best prediction at this point in time. And whatever happens, you might actually come below that if building activity and the permits don't come in quite as much. We hope that doesn't happen, but that's part of the, the, this is, this is one area-
I'm going over to Debbie now.
Actually, I was just nodding in the center because acceptance, I was following where the question was going, and it was the same one I had, but since I have the mic. Katie, are you comfortable with these percentages? Because ultimately, you're the one who's going to be the defendant.
Defend you in the lawsuit. Chip and I have been talking about the, the various scenarios, so certainly, again, wanting to be in that range where we weren't close to the hundred percent, but we thought that there was that, again, the sweet spot, I think is his reference, that we'd be comfortable with.
So, as long as Debbie asks that question, if you were eighty percent based upon the planning and engineering, knowing that you had the analysis that Peter had done, you'd be comfortable with that?
I think that, given the, the discussion that we had previously with regard to this, that you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to get close to, you wouldn't want it, you put it in a better way about how you're not trying to use the one to take care of the other, and so the way that they've structured this is-
No, that's my question, very simple one. I mean, it's, right now, you said you're comfortable with ninety-five, sixty, sixty, is what you've said, in response to Debbie's question, from a legal, in terms of defending it. So, I'm asking you, would you be comfortable with ninety-five, eighty, eighty? I mean, because you've got Peter's analysis? Or are you saying that his analysis is only good up to sixty?
Well, I mean, I, I think that's for the council, that's your policy to make?
The question is, the question is asked to you, what, so, you ask what you're comfortable to defend, and-
I'm always going to be a lot more risk adverse, and it's the council's decision. So, if you're going to say, I'm going to take the lowest number imaginable, but you have a goal to get the highest cost recovery, so that's, there's that tension there. So, if you're going to ask me, I'm going to tell you whatever is the most conservative numbers. So, that's what we-
So, let me sort of help nail Katie up and give her something to think about. I think legally, she could probably defend it, but the way we would get to eighty percent would be we, we increase fees for things that people associate with democracy, appeals, variances and deviations, anything that have, has a public hearing in it, comprehensive plan amendments. We would have to jack up the fees to do those things so high to make them arguably, in some people's minds, as prohibitive. And she can defend it legally, but can you look your constituents in the eyes and say, well, if you really wanted to appeal that, it's going to cost you five thousand bucks, and you've just put it out of touch? Every council has had this debate, Dan.
No, no, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but so let's, to explain that a little bit more, so let's talk about engineering services.
Oh, let's give some examples. So, what is, what is- Building permits, um-
I mean, you've thrown this out here, now that there was somehow, the building permits, and I understand building permits are different from planning and engineering, so what is, so what is that, so this is what? What are we looking at?
Oh, those are the kinds of permits that fall under those categories between purely a private benefit and then private and public. When we talk about public, it's, the benefit is also to the neighbor or the impacted parties nearby. And-
These are just some examples. There's, there's more on the broader chart of fees, but these are just some examples to, to show you that the first four are things that we would define as private benefit only for the, for the most part, and the ones where I would say we probably could, maybe should or could recover more of our costs on those, because the benefit accrues primarily to the applicant. The last four are ones where, yes, there's some benefit to an applicant or an appellant there, but there's also some public benefit. The public also receives some benefit from those different processes. How does, I'm, I'm just, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just trying to ask, example, right-of-way use permit, that's a property owner wanting to use a right-of-way. What is a public benefit of that? It, it, it might be-
Farmer's market.
Right. I was going to say, a, a restaurant that has tables out on a sidewalk or something-
A chamber running some program in the town center.
But that's a public benefit?
The fee, we have to have somebody responsible, so they have to pay a fee, come in and, and-
But it also includes if you're, if you want to, does that include if you've got a house next door, right-of-way, and you want to, you want to encroach into that, that's a right-of-way use permit as well?
You know, other places that we've been at, that would, that takes your case for that. Some people allow them to do on that sidewalk, and if there's a planning strip, they allow to get, in some places, you get a bit of right-of-way permit to plant something or put something in there. Now, your land use codes are designed for what you call community livability, and part of the issue on these kinds of things is that those kinds of permits are based on that comprehensive plan, those kinds of things that you want to see and regulate, that, because you feel that they have some sort of public benefit. In terms of the building type permits, you've, really are talking outside of the single-family zone and all those things, is you're looking at safety requirements, and the only person that really benefits from that is by making sure that house is safe and, and it meets all the requirements that it needs to meet. So, that's when we, when we talk to councils, we always try and get, and also in terms of if you decide they're not fully cost recover, that, that what you're recognizing is that there's some sort of, the public benefits by this part of the regulation.
The other thing I, and it's, and it is, I was just going to say, and it is sort of judgmental. The thing you need to also keep in mind is some of these private and public benefit permits, if you wanted to up the recovery, some of them are more given to it than others. A right-of-way use permit takes, what, about ten, fifteen minutes to do? There's no cost behind it. To, to really recover a lot of money, I mean, we could do it a hundred percent, you're still aren't going to get a dollar ninety-five. If you really wanted to, to recover a lot of cost, do the appeals and the SEPA reviews, because we spend a lot of staff time on those. That is, we subsidize the heck out of appeals and, and SEPA because it's time intensive and, or anything to the hearing examiner, all those things, they're subsidized. That's where you would have to raise the fees to, to get more dollars.
All right. Debbie, thanks for your patience. You're up.
Thanks, Benny answered. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Chip, you've got a proposal on the table. We've had some questions about it. I guess what I'm trying to do at this point is, and I'm going to lay my cards on the table right here and say I am comfortable with what Chip has proposed. I'm hoping it's got support from others, but I want to hear from you if you don't, and where do you want to go if you don't want to go there.
And I, I have a little tool, except if you want to play with percentages, I can plunk them in, you can see what additional revenue is generated.
So, it's, it strikes, I mean, what, what we're talking about is the difference between six hundred and forty-six thousand and two hundred and thirty-five thousand. If we went to a hundred and, a hundred percent cost recovery across the board, that's your six hundred and forty-six thousand number, and so we're basically talking about four hundred and ten thousand dollars is the delta between the hundred percent and what you've proposed. So, that's, that's put that in perspective. I guess what concerns me, and I, I understand your arguments, but I also have lived through this council for the last several years, where on a regular biennial basis, you come before us and keep trying to shift money back into the general fund, whether from utility funds or from the capital fund or from whatever other source you can do it, because you recognize as to really that the general fund is under increasing pressure because of the one percent property tax cap that we live under. So, we spent the last, I don't know how many budgets, doing just that, moving money back into the general fund. So, when we have here a situation where effectively we are moving, what I view as a significant amount of money out of the general fund, but potentially moving a significant amount of money out of the general fund, that does cause me some, some angst. And I don't, I'm, I'm not suggesting for a moment that it should be six hundred and forty-six thousand, but I would think that there's some number between two thirty-five and six forty-six, somewhere probably around four hundred, which is a very palatable number, and that we could instill, leave two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of cushion, or two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars of cushion. I, I just, I'm just concerned because we are, as we've recognized time and again, the general fund is under increasing pressure, and, and I'm not, I think, you know, we went into this project specifically for the purpose of making sure that our general fund would not be burdened by private development. And now we're essentially conceding, if we accept your proposal, that the general fund will be burdened by somewhere north of four hundred thousand dollars. And I accept that there is some public benefit for that, and that's why I'm not suggesting we go the full four hundred, ten thousand dollars delta that we've got there, but I think that, you know, we could close that by another hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy thousand, and I think that that would make a lot more sense, and, and would also, it, we, just one last thing, I mean, understand that it's every penny that we're not charging for development are the taxpayers subsidizing development. And if it's as simple as that, any, anytime you take a dollar out of the general fund that you could be getting from a development fee, it's the taxpayers are funding development. So, this is not increasing the cost, by, by us moving money from going higher than two thirty-five, we're actually reducing the taxpayer subsidy of development. So, it, there is a balance here. It's, it's not, I'm not sitting here and saying, let's go increase, let's go gouge our residents for more money. Effectively, what I'm saying here is that by not doing this to some extent, we are gouging our residents for more money, because we're subsid, we're requiring them to subsidize development more from the general fund. So, I would much prefer a number somewhere around four hundred thousand than two thirty-five.
Mike? Thank you. So, I'm looking at this a little bit differently. This is a tax increase, unless we tie it to a relief in property taxes. And I'm very comfortable in increasing this user tax, if you will, if we have a corresponding decrease in our property taxes. And I think our citizens out there would understand what I'll call a revenue neutral proposition with, with this. But let there be no mistake, if you're like a quarter, let's say a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes, what's that, what percentage is that?
One percent.
About one percent. Right. So, you have a two-point-three-five percent decrease, if we're going with this, these numbers, a two-point-three-five percent decrease in property taxes, I think our citizens would be very embracing of that, recognizing that, that there would be a revenue neutral proposition that we have here. So, I'm very agreeable to whatever percentages we might decide here if it's tied to a revenue neutral property tax decrease, because voting on this without tying it to property tax is a tax increase, and we don't want to increase the revenue the city takes in, we want the city to work within the budget that we have laid out.
Can I ask a point of order? I assume tonight we are not able to vote on any tax increases, decreases, et cetera, that are not in the agenda? decreases, et cetera, that are not in the agenda?
You're actually not gonna vote on any tax or fee increases tonight. What you're trying to do is get to final direction on a, a strategy for development fees that we will then take back and write into a fee ordinance that will be voted on at your next meeting, which also happens to be the same meeting when you will vote on the property tax. So in either case, you're not gonna vote on either tonight, taxes or fees. And just for record, tonight's discussion is about fees. Fee taxes.
I do, but I don't-
Who's on this?
I have additional comments.
All right. Debbie, you're up.
I'm with Bruce on this one. And, and that's with full respect to Dan's point, that there's potential room between the 235,000 and 400 and some odd. But I go back to the, the two principles, which are, first of all, what, three principles? Cost recovery is near as possible. The meantime, reducing risk so that Katie does not have to get up and defend us in any way, shape, or form for these fees. And then what is reasonable? And a lot of my current reaction right now is based on having sat through an appeal process that took place with the planning commission some time back. And I put myself in that position thinking if those costs had been significantly more, as much as 100% more, would that resident or any resident feel that they had due course as an avenue for them to have their situation or their concern heard? So at this point, I am comfortable following staff recommendation with the 95, 16, and 60.
Okay, so I've, Mike, you nodded your head. Are you okay with that? Okay, so I think we're at three and a half in favor of your plan. Or three and a, and a, one with a big caveat on it.
An asterisk.
Yes, big asterisk. So I think you've got that.
There's, after that, there was a few other recommendations. Over time, our fees have not kept pace with the actual cost of providing those services. And so, for example, we've, we've given staff the authority to annually adjust our development services fees by CPI. And one of the reasons when you looked at the cost of service, it actually declined a little bit from 75% to 72%. And as you compare 12 to 14, part of the reason is because we're not adjusting the fees for the actual cost and personnel costs. And so I'm suggesting that when we bring back the resolution to you on the 18th, we're allowed to put language on there, that where I, I use a higher escalator that's tied to DSG personnel costs. I can, I can nail that down pretty closely.
And Chip, let me ask, just from a practical standpoint, so do you need actual motions tonight?
I, I've, I've got a list out there for you.
You, you do need formal motions or do you?
I was, is, informal direction now. You don't. For, for the practical matter, numbers three and four, you don't need motions. We are going to do the DSG time-keeping recommendations. We decide that, you don't have to decide that. That's, that's implementation, that's administration. And the conduct, conducting another DSG cost of service study in 2015, we're gonna have to decide that as part of the budget for 2015, not in 2013. You'll go around asking this question in about a year and a half.
So we can complete two and be done with our work here?
I think so.
And, and-
And what he's asking for, can you give him the thumbs up on an inflation escalator?
Yep.
This will help keep this problem from having to come up quite so starkly in the future.
Okay, yes, yes, I mean, yes, Mike, you're the-
Yeah, of course, I, I don't like the higher increase in, the higher one. CPI is what we do, CPI what we do across the board?
Yes, I mean, it, it's type of, CPI, it affects our labor costs. We don't, with the bargaining units, sometimes we do 90% CPI because there are components of the CPI that would get pulled out. And with the non-union employees, it's a year-by-year decision made by the city itself. Not, it's not a negotiated amount, so it's, sometimes it's CPI, sometimes it's less.
Yeah, I see this as a, um, increasing, um, the need for higher taxes because you're raising, you're increasing the pot of revenue faster than if it would have been CPI, than with the CPI. So, I mean, that's not where I want to go. I, I don't want to necessarily increase the amount of money that we're taking from our citizens. So I would, I would say with the CPI W, especially in that, I fully anticipate that we'll probably do a fee analysis more frequently than before. So the adjustment would get taken care of through that fee analysis.
Chip, am I right to understand that if, for instance, you guys got a lot more efficient in your work and decided you could do with one less person, your costs would drop and that would be reflected then in a fee, a fee decrease going along with that? Whereas just doing it on a straight inflationary basis doesn't get you that kind of responsiveness? Am I missing that?
Don't forget, there's another variable. That's the, that the volume of stuff that you're doing that comes into play. And so, but, you know, if we got, if we got more efficient because staffing costs stayed the same, but volume of permits increased, the, the adjustment we'd have to make is not do rate increases on the fees. We'll have to just recover less because we can't over-recover. So it's, it's moving factors and just trying to stay within a defensible, um, these are taxes. Taxes you deal with different and you can get a whole lot extra. These are fees, get, have to be related to the cost of the service. Yeah?
No, it's, it's the opposite of what Mike said. It's every time you're not recovering, every time your recovery percentage drops, you're subsidizing more from the general fund. Because you have to subsidize more from the general fund, your taxes have to go up to cover it.
Not if you got more efficient.
I understand that. But if you're, if you assume that your recovery percentage is dropping, which is what Chip was concerned about by being at CPI versus the actual cost of the personnel, that just means your recovery percentage is dropping, you're subsidizing more from the general fund, and effectively you're having to increase taxes to do that.
Yeah, if you hold steady the volume of work, then you have to have something like a CPI escalator just to keep pace. That's right.
No, we just-
I'm gonna cut to the chase. Are we still at least three in favor of this or at four?
Okay, I have what I need.
You have what you need.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you to our consultants, Nathan and Peter.
Okay, we conclude regular business, move to other business council member absences. Obviously, we have two, uh, motion to excuse-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, move to excuse Councilmember Brown and Sim.
In favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Very good planning schedule. I understand there's a retirement plan. It's gonna happen. So we're trying to get all the work done here in the next two meetings. You got your plastic bag, Dan, and SMP. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring that back in a form that you can adopt at the next meeting. And then you got all the mid-biennial budget stuff. And it's always a big needy meeting. And then on December 2nd, we got-
So on November 18th, we're also gonna have the DSG?
That's part of the mid-biennial budget stuff.
I see, okay, it's buried in there.
I see, I see it, yep.
And is it, do we need to have an early start time for this November 18 meeting? I'm looking at that and thinking, yikes.
Yeah, it might not be a bad idea.
I guess I'll leave it to you guys to-
If we have an early start time, that's an early start time of the regular business. That's not-
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a study session topic in here. I see-
Right, no, there isn't one.
Mike, what do you, are you objecting?
No, I'm quite comfortable with that, but oftentimes it seems that we do an early start time and we say that we're starting early, so therefore six to seven o'clock is study session.
I'm thinking this is just a regular meeting starting at six.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right. But let's assume that unless there's an objection. Okay. All right, sorry.
That's it. It's, you know, as you go through those items, I just urge you, you have two real busy meetings ahead. Try to be as, you know, as efficient as you can as you guys work through it and get her done. I have a question on this, which, why is the thrift shop bond ordinance on here? It seems, not seems to me, but I painfully watched all of the September 19th meeting.
And the councils will watch our meetings.
It was very painful. The council was very clear on its position.
Chip explained that in the email he sent around, Mike.
Well, well, Mike has a slightly different question and it's a fair question, which is-
It was very clear at that meeting that, understanding interest risk, we fully understood interest risk, that we felt the relevant point was the sustainable revenue from the thrift shop that we thought would take six months from September 19th period. And that's why we put that off until 2Q 2014. Fully understanding, I mean, several people made mention of interest risk. Yet we see this on the thrift shop bond ordinance. So I think that's counter what was directed by the council.
So, and Mike, as I understood it, in, it's a fair question. Your, your question was council gave direction to put it sometimes in Q2. Why is it appearing here? Council hasn't given that direction. Noel did a little bit of research and so I'm handing off to him to answer the question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Noel Tree, Deputy City Manager. And the reason it's back on are those reasons that Chip articulated in his email. But the sort of authority to put it back on is found in the council rules, which allow the city manager, the mayor, or two council members to place an item on a, on a meeting agenda. So given the reason, the rationale Chip has for the need to, to want you to look, take a second look at this, we do have the authority on the city manager's side to-
And, and I endorse Chip's recommendation that, given the Fed's decision to continue with the quantitative easing, keeping the interest rates low, that it was incumbent upon us to provide to the council the option to issue the debt early and capture those savings. You guys can still say no. I mean, that's-
Well, let me go on record. I don't think that is in the spirit of the council. The council clearly identified that what was driving this train was the sustainable revenue forecast that wouldn't be documented until 2Q 14. And we fully recognize interest risk. And yes, by the letter, the city manager, the mayor, or two council members can put anything on the agenda, but never do we counter what a full council says.
That's not, that wasn't, that's not an accurate statement of what happened. It was Chip who actually told us that he wanted initially to wait to get, to see that what the revenue picture was. And now he's come back to us and said, you know, there's a chance that we can actually save some money on this bond. And if we wait six months, it may actually cost the taxpayers more. So I'm doing the responsible thing as your finance director and coming back to you and giving you the opportunity to save your taxpayers some money. And blows me away, Mike.
Again, I would say again, the council was fully aware about interest risk.
No.
Yes, it was. No, it was, they were aware of interest risk. It was mentioned a couple times and it was emphasized several, several times that the issue was not interest risk. The issue was sustainable revenue after the revenue forecasts or the actual revenues were not being met.
You're, you're so mistaken.
I've got the quote right here.
No, but Chip, but Chip told you that the interest rates had gone up. There had been a spike in interest rates. And it's come back down again because of the Fed's policy.
A spike. Yeah, it's a great increase.
I have to stop, I have to stop. A little ready to be done. It is on the calendar for the next meeting and it's there with proper authority to put it there. And I hear that you object to it being there, but it is. So with that, we are going, hey, Bruce, on the schedule, are we still off for December 16th? Good question.
And I ask that because I look at the agenda for the 2nd, which is another, another beefy one.
Your call.
Your call. Future city manager, how are you feeling about whether you want to do a Christmas party on the 16th here?
Well, I would say in keeping with tradition that we should try and avoid that December 16th date as a meeting and get it done on the 2nd.
So maybe, maybe the answer is this, please don't book anything for that time. But let's understand that there is a distinct possibility that we're gonna use that meeting time.
We can also, we can also shrink down that meeting like the Mercerdale Wi-Fi. That was, you guys asked us to look at it by the end of the year and so it's the end of the year. But that can happen in 2014. You don't have to have that on. There's nothing pushing that. That was, I don't even remember who, whose idea that was to-
I would throw through the solicitor's ordinance, you know, given the, you know, you hadn't decided to have it on the next couple of generals, but I can do it.
But we did go back and check the tape and it didn't, there wasn't anything one way or the other of what we promised in terms of timing. We put it back in here because I said we would, but that's something that you could slide into next year.
Council members, let's keep the 16th open and remain flexible about that.
I also consider, again, an early start on the 2nd.
Anything else, planning, calendar-wise?
I-90 update, I see that on December 2nd. Is there any late-breaking news that council members might want to share with us? Or no?
No, I don't, I don't have anything to share at this point. The reason we didn't have one scheduled tonight, as we've done a, a time or two in the past, though nothing as much has changed since my report last week and the recap to the public hearing. I anticipate that the next week we'll have some new reports. We'll have our scoping letter prepared and filed with the state. We might have word on a special session, whether that's gonna occur or not occur. So I think we'll, we'll definitely have one next meeting. And I don't think that's actually reflected on the 18th planning schedule. So that's one thing that we do need to change. And then in addition, on the 18th, I'll be bringing a budget proposal. We've, we've just about expended the existing budget and I'll be walking you through what our budgetary needs are over the next several months or so. Yeah.
So there was no change at the legislature for finding a means to avoid the need for tolling I-90?
Not yet. I mean, our lobbyist continues to work with Olympia, but I don't have anything to report at this point in terms of whether there'll be a special session or what the content of that session are gonna be.
Okay. Were appointments thrown in? Council member reports?
Mike?
Nope.
Just wanted to note that on Sunday, Island Books celebrated their 30th anniversary. And I was down there, the 30th anniversary was Roger and Nancy. Only at the 40th anniversary was Island Books. And it was a great event, a lot of people from the community down there. Some, Nancy cooked some amazing pies for those who were there. And it's just really great to have that kind of community event.
Mike? No? Mike? Nothing? Okay, a couple of quick ones. I, I was recruited by the school district to help with their education spec citizen committee around the sustainability issue. I attended the first meeting today, it was interesting. And we'll be attending several more of those apparently. We also held a CLU, Governor's CLU mayor briefing. Mr. Grady, Ms. Sun, and I were there. That went well, I think, and the county went off with the action plan to put together the first draft of a letter that could become a mayor's letter, letter in support of the CLU action. So that is at least fitfully rolling along at this point. I think that's all I've got. There's nothing else for the good of the order. We are adjourned. Thank you.